Do we have any commissioners on Zoom? No, I don't think he's.
I know.
They did it with.
It's so wrong. I'm the dog. They're all puppy things. Sorry.
So, good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is Thursday, May 16th, 2024, and it is 9:06 a.m. And we are all excited because the contract for Epicenter has been signed, sealed, and delivered. It was not an easy process. Nothing through PED or state procurement is easy. So I want to thank everyone, the RFP Committee, for all the work that you folks did, and everyone on the PED side to get this to this point. We were in Chicago two weeks ago, and they were so excited about the contract being signed. So we really are excited for what this is hopefully going to help schools make reporting less burdensome. That's, you know, that was part of the goal of driving this. And then also for us to be able to explore what information we can get to give us the best information for making quality decisions. I'm sorry. Well, a lot of that information is only as quick as the state can provide it. So that's, you know, they don't have any control over that piece. Only if the state can provide it. They're doing a presentation. This is my intro to their presentation. They're here to do us a present. No, they're on Zoom. Yes, they're here. Okay, so whenever you're ready.
Are you taking role?
Yeah, we are.
Here.
Here. Here.
Oh, I just got to do this. I forgot. Commissioner Klaas de Sylage.
Sure.
Commissioner Ingham.
Here.
Vice Chair Corillo.
Here.
Chair Gibson.
Here.
And Secretary Beck here. There are eight commissioners present.
Wonderful.
Is it Mary that's here, or?
So I'll be happy to introduce our guest speakers this morning. So the contract is actually with the Institute for Excellence in Education, doing business as the National Charter Schools Institute to help us secure Epicenter as the authorizing platform. And I won't give too many details because I know our partners, Mary Bradley and Megan Murphy, who are here on Zoom, will share all the wonderful information about that platform. I'm just so excited. And just so you guys know, Mary and Megan, I wish you were here, but a cake is arriving so we can celebrate that this finally happened. Thank you for being here this morning.
So, good morning, and I apologize. We don't have the upgrade yet on our room, so all you get to see is the back of our heads. We have the pleasure of seeing you from the front, but you only get the back of our heads. So, but we're really, we're more than excited for you folks to be here. It's been a long journey, especially with Mary. It's probably three years ago that we first started this, so welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you so much for having us today, and it's, we're excited as well.
Yeah, you're muted.
The back of your head, that's okay.
Somehow, we can't hear you speak, Mary. Can you check your mic?
Yep.
Mary, I could hear you.
We can't hear you either, Megan.
Can you hear me now? No? Um.
I can hear you, Mary, but I.
Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you for the introduction. We are super excited to be partnering with all of you, the PED and the PEC, to bring you Epicenter. As mentioned, there was a recognition a few years ago that something more was needed, and not just for the team doing the work on the authorizing side, but for schools. And so we're really excited that, you know, New Mexico will be joining, you know, over 100 authorizers across the nation using Epicenter. And it's great that you're taking that next step, both for your team and for the schools. So I'm going to give you a broad overview of Epicenter. Some of you have seen it through the procurement process, others have not. And we will be able to answer questions and be able to make sure that you have anything that, you know, you're curious about answered today. So the big focus of Epicenter is to make sure you have the technology and the systems to stay focused on what matters most, which is students and families. And so that goes for your team doing the work out there with schools, the PEC having the information you need at your fingertips, and for schools to have a streamlined system that really works well. So like we said, we don't want people bogged down in paperwork. It's really making sure everything's streamlined, and that expectations are clear, and there's transparency. And so those are our big focuses, you know, when we talk about Epicenter. So as Karina mentioned, we are doing business as National Charter Schools Institute. That's our organization. Epicenter is part of the National Charter Schools Institute. So we have this system. It was developed 20 years ago by an authorizer to make sure that things are streamlined and transparent. And so it's been evolving, it's been developing. And so the power of it being part of the National Charter Schools Institute is that we not only bring the technology, but also our expertise. So just a little bit of background on myself. I was a charter authorizer before joining the National Charter Schools Institute. So I was the Executive Director of Charter Schools in Chicago. And then previous to that, I was in Michigan as statewide authorizer at Central Michigan University. So I've spent a lot of time doing this work. And so I, along with the team, which Megan leads, are able to bring that technology, our expertise around authorizing, and make sure it makes sense and it fits your context. And so we do obviously Epicenter, but also a lot of services as well, supporting the work of the team. So a big thing for us with you, and also with you and your schools, is there's that shared vision and values. We have that relationship of mutual trust and respect. Expectations are clear in communication. So at the end of the day, we're getting things done for students and families. And so that's our big focus, and we align with your team on goals, what we're trying to accomplish, and make sure that we have those great communications. You are joining authorizers across the nation. So we have Epicenters in 24 states plus DC and Guam. So I think we're actually pushing about 3,500 charter schools this next year that Epicenter touches. What I want you to hear from this is that we are bringing best practices from so many different authorizer states and applying it to context. So when your team is, hey, how does other people, how do they handle this? Or how do, what's the best practice in X or Y? We're able to connect you and also bring not only our expertise from doing similar work, but also applying it to context in other states. And so example this morning, as I'm calling a couple authorizers, connecting them around a policy issue, around practice. So we not only bring that technology, but also our experience of ourselves and also from others. So here's just some of our other partners, just a few of them. You'll recognize SUNY Charter Schools Institute, New York, DC Public Charter School Board, Chicago Public Schools. So we really support over 100 authorizers, anywhere from state commissions like yourself to districts, to higher ed authorizers, and nonprofits. And so we really focus in bringing those best practices across our partners. And we have a lot of learning opportunities. So monthly, we have webinars. We have not only how does Epicenter meet your needs, but how do we bring practice into the work as well? And we want your whole team, as well as you and your schools, to be working in that preparation planning, because that's where really the great work happens, and not worried about chasing down paperwork, making phone calls, and emails that are unnecessary. So we really bring that system to help you to work in that higher level work. So what does Epicenter do? And we say it's your one-stop shop. It helps to collaborate across organizations. So with you, PED, and the PEC, collaboration there. It also helps collaborate with schools. And so schools will be able to come into the system and do all their work in there, be able to communicate back and forth. And so it really takes care of those unnecessary communications, and so things don't get lost. And that's a real key piece. It automates reoccurring activities. So whether things are annually, monthly, weekly even, it can automate those reoccurring activities. And it systematizes all the calendar for your team and the schools. It even helps to assess academic, financial, and organizational performance, and I'll show you what that will look like. Managing those documents and reports. So we say like everything at your fingertips. So not only is it easy, it sets up all the workflows. It also allows retrieval. And even when schools next year go to work on the same submission to your office, they'll be able to even see, it'll pop up, oh, this is what you submitted last year. Do you want to reference it? So it really helps to streamline and make sure that everything is available to who needs it. It strengthens transparency, so not only between the authorizer in schools, but also I'll show you some transparency features for the public. And so we believe in transparency is key. And so it allows the transparency across all organizations and even features for the public. The whole charter lifecycle, from application to startup, all the way through renewal, the system has features to help manage all that. And at the end of the day, it just streamlines all those workflows. And so it makes sure everybody knows what's expected, when, and are able to do their work. It is mobile friendly, so not only on desktop, laptop, but also on mobile phones and tablets. So it's responsive. So if someone's out in the field or at school, or a school leader picks up and says, oh, I want to check on this, they're able to actually just, you know, access it from anywhere, and it's fully web-based. So there's no plugins or installations, which really makes it a great system for people on the go. As I mentioned, it really manages that whole charter lifecycle. You're very familiar with this, from the application phase to startup. You can, everything gets scheduled to make sure startups are on track, all the way to the annual performance oversight and accountability. So how are schools doing? And it does provide real-time information, which is great, all the way in through renewal. What are we looking at? Is there extra things we need to collect for renewal? We can, you can organize it in different ways of key things that are pertinent to renewal. And so it really helps to manage that. And in the unfortunate event of closure, we hope that never happens, but it can be a system to really make sure everything stays on track legally for closure as well. So a little bit about it, your logo will be going at the top. So if anybody logs in, no matter what type of device, they'll see the, your logo. So it is kind of like a white label where they feel like, oh, I'm part of the PEC schools. It is customizable. It's highly secure. And so we are able to meet industry best practice, HIPAA, FERPA compliance. It is a highly secure system. And for those of you who care about security, this is a little bit of information. It is encrypted. It's at fully arrest. It's backed up. It is a highly reliable system. And we are SOC 2 Type 2 certified. And so that means we do monthly web scans, penetration testing, policy reviews, and make sure that everything's aligned according to those standards. So a little bit about what you will see. And I can open up the live site, and so you can see that as well. But this just gives a broad overview. We do believe in the three-legged stool is important to support kids and families. Schools are part of that. Boards are part of that, and so is the authorizer. And so we believe when all three are working well together, that students and families have the best outcomes. And so that's a, that's a very strong belief of ours. And so we want everybody on the same page. What that means is every school have a profile. There's customizable fields too, so if you're tracking different things about the school, you'd be able to just pop this open, see everything about each school, the information, location, type of charter, when it was opened. Everything is going to be at your fingertips, including who's who at the school. And so that's really important for relationships. And even school boards, who's on the school board? You can have profiles, like are they a parent rep? Are they, you know, what's their education level? Where do they live? That all can be tracked as profiles around each board member. And so this is a really important thing. So even you can put, have pictures of the board members. So if you're meeting with any of them, you kind of know, you know, who is this? You can recognize them right away, put a face to a name. Also, school contacts. And what we know about this, this is really important, that we know who's who at the school at all time. This can be built out as wide as possible. So if you want, who's the special ed director? Who's the finance manager? That can all be in Epicenter. And anything that's in Epicenter, data, people, things, can always be extracted in easy-to-read files. And so not only is it in Epicenter Live, but it also can be extracted for other purposes. So you'll be able to understand who's at the school, profiles. It actually even has a neat feature with history. So if you're looking back on renewal and saying, you know, who's been at the school? How many leaders have they had in the past five years? It will show you the history of how many leaders they've had, who were they, and be able to just understand stability from a school perspective as well. So that's like about the school, the people, everything will be in Epicenter and available and can be extracted. One of the main things authorized or does is make sure that expectations are getting met. So there's a lot of things that an authorizer in a school do throughout the year. What Epicenter does is systematize all of that and makes it into a workflow, all the way from submission from a school to review, and then file for historical purposes and reference at a later time. And so schools have all these responsibilities that they're, they have. There's usually a long list, whether that's from the state, the authorizer, federal. And so what Epicenter does is put that in a streamlined calendar. And so this is all interactive. And so when schools come in, they can actually look ahead, which is great, so they can be proactive, and they can look back. Your team will be able to see what's due for all schools. Schools will only be able to see their portion of the site. They won't see all the other schools. So it is all security-based and roles-based. And at the end of the day, they can always just log in and see everything that's coming up. They can see what's passed due and easily submit that to the office. What's also great about Epicenter is not only can they log in at any time, the schools and your reviewers at the authorizer office to get their work done, they'll also get an automatic email notification every Monday. It'll say, hey, this is what's coming up in the next two weeks, or oops, you missed this last week. And so the system automatically sends those reminders. And if they miss something, you can actually set it so they get an automatic notification and say, hey, yesterday you were supposed to turn this in, and you missed it. And so the system really works and cuts out all those unnecessary communications. And the schools always know what's due. They can always just come in, and they get these email reminders. Another great aspect of Epicenter is it provides resources and instructions. So your team will, can put resources, templates, anything that the school may need, all in one place. So when a school comes to do their work and submit anything, all those, and all the information they need to get the work done is right here in the site for them. So the workflow works, the school submit. It then comes, they can write notes. They'll see exactly what is due. You can actually lock it down to what format. So if you only want something in Excel, you can, you know, change the setting just to Excel or any file format. They can attach documents, fill out the data sheets, whatever they need to do for the team. They can write notes right in Epicenter. So what's great about this is when the team comes in to do any reviews, they'll see who from the school submitted it, what its timestamp. They'll be able to open up any documents or view data that was submitted. They'll be able to keep notes. They'll be able to write notes back to the school. They can, your team will be able to accept it or return it with a note on there saying, hey, you know, this looks okay, but we'd like you to add, or you missed this step. And so you can communicate right back and forth, and it pushes it right back into the school's task queue. So it really takes out that unnecessary needs for emails or phone calls and allows it to all be documented in the system and keep everything flowing. And at all times, schools will be able to see where it is at in the process. They'll see if approval's pending. They'll see like where, who, where's it at? And so they can always recall it as well and be able to view it. And if they realize that they made a mistake, your team will be able to push it back to them so that they can make an update as well. So that's really how the workflow process works. Schools will also be able to submit data. So instead of sending them spreadsheets or Google Docs, you'll be able to send them an easy-to-fill-out form. And what's great is it always stays in Epicenter. You can do this for one school, all schools, groups of schools. And we see typically authorizers asking things like at the beginning of the year or mid-year. During COVID, we saw a lot of back and forth with data. And so our partners use this to get information quickly. And what's good is this can be extracted, so you can even have an Excel file and be able to do additional analysis based on data that the schools provide. So that's where the scheduling, you schedule everything out, both who is going to submit it from the school and who's reviewing it at the authorizing level. It gets assigned to the right people. It's all roles-based. They have everything they need. They're getting notifications, an easy system to be able to submit. And then it organizes everything. One of my favorite features in my roles as an authorizer was I had these frequently used documents flagged. And so at any time, I'm like, okay, I'm out in the field, and I need to charter contract, or I need to look at a management agreement, or a lease, or a budget real quick, I could pull up the frequently used document list and be able to reference that very quickly about every one of my schools. Or if it's not there, I can just use the easy search feature. It'll find quickly what I'm looking for if I just start typing in, you know, budget. It'll just start, you know, filling it in, and I can select the right item. It also will organize, you know, charter school board meetings, minutes, agendas, things like that. And so that's always, and it's able to adjust to like, what, what month do I need to look at? And you'll be able to get the packets and minutes and agendas right there. So it organizes everything. So it's easy search features. There's sorting that can be done, and it's highly secure. So it's all roles-based. Not only does it meet industry best standards for all states, but it also is secured and roles-based. So some people can have access to everything. Some people can have access to certain sections, certain schools. Schools will only be able to see their site. Your team will be able to see all the schools. And so it is all securities and roles-based. And even when consultants come in to do maybe reviews, they can have access to only the things that they need access to. So it is highly secure, both from the industry best practice for technology, but also to who needs access to what. And finally, the search feature. Everything's always retrievable and easily retrieved. You can start typing in financial, it'll give you some options. You can click on it, and then it will give you results. There's also the advanced search feature, so you can, you know, select down to the year, the type, the school, groups of schools, schools that are in renewal. There's all sorts of ways to use the advanced search feature. And what's great is you can review the document that you're looking for, or if it has to go somewhere else for like a FOIA request, or the state needs something in another system, you can easily select multiple ones and zip them and send them off. And so it makes it real easy to retrieve everything, and then also to fulfill any requests by an external agency. And finally, transparency. So it's a very transparent system across the organization and with schools. They'll always be able to see anything in Epicenter and be able to recall it. And that's a really good value add, and they can see what's coming up. They're not guessing. So the system will provide everything for them. And it's also transparent. We have a feature for the public. Schools can use this, so if they have so many requirements every year that they have to post on their website, they can have five years of financial audits. What's great about it is once it's set up on their site, they just embed the code. It'll take the oldest one down once the newest one comes up. So they don't have to touch that site, and your team will even be able to see and say, oh, they're using Epicenter code in there. I can see it. I know that it's meeting standards. Your team will also be able to use it on your website. So you'll be able to have, if we want all the charter agreements, or audits, or anything about the charter school, we embed a code into the website. It'll automatically update for all schools and make sure the amount of years or quarters that need to be up there are updating the website automatically. That's a really nice feature that adds the transparency for the public. So that's the whole, how the whole workflow works around documents and submissions. And I'm going to switch sides to empowering, supporting leaders. Is not only do we want everything to come in, we want to make sure that everything's, you know, coming in correctly on time. How's that status look? And how do we be assessing the frameworks? So academic, operational, and financial frameworks are going to be built into Epicenter. So you'll always be able to see for all schools where your portfolio is. It's all interactive in the system. It'll drill down, so if you want to say, hey, you know what, who's not meeting, or what items are not meeting, this can be analyzed in so many different ways, and it's just easy access to see what's happening. What's great about this is schools will see their information for their schools. So you'll be able to see the whole portfolio in general and how each individual school or campus is doing. Schools will be able to see how they're doing. So it's real time. They'll be able to see the update. They'll be able to see what's still in review. What's the quality rating, and that can be turned on and off for certain items. And what's their timeliness? And I love this as an authorizer, because I could say, is it us, or is it the schools? Is it timing that we're requiring things to come in? And so we did analysis as an authorizer ourselves to understand, do we need to provide more resources or instructions? Is this why we keep having to return things back and forth? Or, you know, a lot of schools are getting this late into us. Is there a timing issue because of the time of the year? Schools will be able to, school leaders, if they're working with their team to get things to you, they'll be able to stay on top of it as well and know where they stand at all times with your, the authorizing team. Scorecards is a feature that allows you to see, take your frameworks and build it into a technology. So we take all your frameworks, your business rules. We map it to the data, so as data comes in, the reports populate. This is a great feature, and it was actually brought in when I was in Chicago, and I contacted Epicenter and said, hey, my team is spending way too much time producing reports. I need them talking with schools and pinpointing areas of need out in the field. Can we streamline this? Can you help us? So Epicenter team built this, and it's really to bring clarity, consistency. It cuts down on human error and make sure that schools can see and get timely reports, and that you, as a decision body, can also get timely data and information. So it rolls it up to the whole portfolio of the different measures. It's all custom-built for your frameworks. You'll be able to see, it's all interactive. If you're saying, who's not meeting current ratio? You can click on that, and it'll tell you which schools. Then you can drill down into each school and see how they're doing. So this is just an example of a financial framework that has been built into Epicenter. You'll be able to see, are they meeting? And this is all customizable to your language. On your rubrics will be built right in. You'll be able to expand it and see the data that went behind this metric and be able to see overall, how is the school doing? These scorecards will be built for, based on your frameworks for finance, academics, and operations. And so, like I said, it's all customizable down to the color, to your business rules, and it will streamline those report creations and provide consistency across schools. So that's how some of the information is brought up and rolled up into, you know, information that is helpful, and it's all interactive. Anything in Epicenter is clickable, and you're able to retrieve information quickly. We also have Custom Center, which we, a lot of authorizers call Resource Center, and it's to any other resources that you want to provide. So if you have best practice sharing across schools, you can create those categories and have schools submit their best practices. And so it makes it sharing across schools really great, and your team will be able to share resources. And so instead of schools trying to go find things here and there, this can all be updated. So if you have templates, or best practices, or resources to share with schools that aren't related to submissions, that can all be categorized and provided for schools. So they'd be able to come in at all times, get information. And we even have authorizers use this internally, so that like they're, only their team or their board can see things. So things like bylaws and policies, best practices for authorizers, all that can be stored here and serve as a resource for the team. And finally, new school application. So new school application, this is all web-based. So as new school applicants come in, they'll So as new school applicants come in, they'll, your whole application will be built in, they'll be able to collaborate with each other. Um, it's all based on your timelines, it's based on your application, it can be differentiated. So if you have certain types of schools that have to answer certain questions, the application will know that and be able to differentiate by the applicant. And so they'll be able to collaborate with their teams, multiple people can be in it, they can do their narrative, they can upload um supporting documentation, submit it to your team, your rubrics are all built in, your team, multiple team members can collaborate, assigned to all sections, some sections, and really be able to do their reviews more efficiently. And finally, you can see where everybody's at, it'll roll up into a final report and uh be able to come to you as for the, as a decision-making body. So it really streamlines both for the applicant and for the reviewers and all the way into the reporting um side of the application. So with that, I wanted to, and I can answer all your questions about the functionality, I did want to give you an overview of the timeline. Um, right now, we did, we had our kickoff meeting with the team, um, we're real excited to get started. Uh, they're diving into everything we need to get the site set up. So your site setup will be um happening over the next couple of weeks. We'll be doing workflow management, annual calendar, um submission requirements, building that into the system, and then training will start. So we're going to be focusing in the next several weeks on building, making sure the system's working well, it's configured the way it needs to be. And then we start training with the staff, the commission, um, in schools. And so once that's, you know, happening and I'll actually, Megan and I will be at um the conference to give schools a preview. Um, let them even, you know, poke around themselves to see what it looks like before they're fully trained. And so we're excited, um, because schools, um, even when I was in Chicago, they're like, Mary, you're gonna make a lot of, we know you're gonna make changes, just don't get rid of epicenter. It's really been a value add for us and it really helps our team a lot. And so we'll be sharing with schools, um, the functionality, the ease of use, and allowing them to get a sneak preview and be able to uh poke around the system themselves as well. So even ahead of formal training, um, so that they can start becoming familiar with the schools. And meeting with the team, we're gonna, we definitely have our timeline, we project plan everything out, working with the team and make sure everything's ready to go live, so at the beginning of the school year, everything is up and going and schools are in the system um in using it. We uh are working with the the team, we'll be working with some of the commission members to make sure we're all aligned with goals and make sure that we keep in mind all your goals and what you're trying to accomplish with the system and everything we do will be focused on that. We are doing the implementation, keeping everything organized, we do project management. Our team will have about five people that are making sure implementation is going well, and that will be led by Megan, who's on this call. Uh, we'll be proactive and consistent, you can count on us to support you beyond implementation. So we are hands-on during an implementation and through the first year and we support ongoing. And so you'll have a support specialist assigned uh to work with your team and we'll be supporting you and even through the first six months, we do an optimization review, we lift up the hood and say, this is how you're using it. This is how you can expand your use and this is how others are doing it. So we do a a approach that is not only we get you implemented, but we stay with you to make sure you're maximizing and optimizing the system. And then we commit that we'll be ready to implement for the next school year, uh, working with your team and um, you know, heavily with Karina's team, but also with the commissioner to make sure we're staying on track and meeting expectations as well. Like I said, you'll have a strong support team, we have a help center that's available 24/7. What's great about our team is when you pick up the phone and give us a call or the school needs technical support, our, you actually talk to a person. Our team is hands-on, we talk, we have a ticketing system, we have phone, we have email. And so our team is always here to support and we're available to um five o'clock your time. And so from the regular business hours, we'll have team members there. And then we have helpful articles and videos and everything that's available 24/7 on our help desk. And we hold monthly webinars, we'll be meeting with your team regularly throughout the first year. And we also um provide opportunities to collaborate with other authorizers in learning, how do we use the system better? What are others doing and what can we do? So our team is is really hands-on on the technical support. And we have tons of um knowledge on schools, boards, authorizing, and we really bring that expertise along with our services. Um, and we bring that to epicenter as well. So you're not only working with a great team to support that gets 10 out of 10 on our surveys, but also with expertise from the field. So with that, I'm going to pause and um hopefully that was a good overview, just in general, what epicenter is going to bring, both to your team, the commission and the schools. Um, but I want to make sure that we're able to answer any questions that you have today.
I think people are processing a lot. Um, I guess the only question, well, I guess the only question I have is, you know, we've would, over the last two years because of lack of data that we get from the state system, uh, we're looking at being able to use more of data that schools are providing to us. So can you just briefly talk a little bit about how we can use their short cycles uh through this system to be able to generate uh the information that we need?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's always the challenge, right, is when data is available. Um, and so I always, you know, that was something that was always frustrating to me, whether it's finance or academics, like the data comes in at different times. And with academics, you're sometimes just waiting and waiting and that happens at all, in all states. Um, one thing I'll say is, as you're differentiating by school or you're collecting more frequent data, the system will be able to be that source of bringing that information in. And then as it relates to like the framework or scorecards, they'll be able to go over into those um, those scorecards. And so it will help with those um times where you can't wait so long for state data, is how can that information come in? And that's something we'll be mapping with the team to say, what needs to come in, when, let's get that scheduled? And then how does it apply to the framework? Um, and so hopefully, um, that will help to alleviate some of that waiting time and also, um, you know, meet those needs according to your authorizing practices as well.
Steven and then Jim?
Um, hey, Mary, thanks for that presentation and all the work. So kind of builds on what uh Ms. Gibson said around when we get data. Because my biggest concern since I've been on the commission is relying on the state in any way for anything, actually. And so the whole, for me, the whole thing was around um the real-time data that we can get. So a school, like with short cycles, a school can input information, if I'm hearing this correctly, to epicenter. And um, that information is immediately available to us. It doesn't have to go through PED, I don't know, be analyzed or whatever first and then get to us.
So that, yeah, and that's something we're gonna be working um with in partnership with both the PED and PEC. Um, we've seen best practices is when the authorizer um uh commission is also utilizing epicenter in it. Um, what information is most important and what is, you know, live and ready to go versus what then gets, you know, analyzed and rolled up? So when, like for example, if it does get rolled up into a scorecard, it's pretty quick. Um, that data, when it comes into the right format, it's it's generated, the team takes a look at it, make sure everything looks good and it can be uh generated. When other items, and that's what we're going to be working with, I I believe with this um subsection of the commission, is what do you want to see real time? What is the most important, what um, you know, do you want to see everything or do you want to see certain sections? And so that's something we'll be working with strategically with the team. I will be bringing best practices and what we see is most effective and then we'll work that out and make sure that it um is most effective.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say, because this is the biggest issue for me, is that if we have a school that, for instance, is maybe on some sort of performance plan because they have not been uh delivering in academics for however long. And we have benchmarks, uh, you know, maybe it's uh every quarter, every semester that we want to see, uh, so if it's every semester and it's, let's say, end of December is when they're closing the semester, beginning of January, we want to see those scores and those results in January. We don't want to have to wait six months, have somebody else analyze it. Or I'm talking, I mean, I don't know if others feel the same way, but I I want to see that. Because all too often, by the time we get information, it's old for us, when we've been wanting something to happen and quickly. We're needing schools to turn around, um, and that can't wait a year or six months, we need the information quickly. Is that going to be possible? And I want to make sure as well that um none of this needs, this data information needs to cycle through PED before it gets to us. We have direct access, real-time to the schools.
Yeah, that's, that's the, epicenter does have that capability um to provide, you know, real-time data and information um and be able to provide that access.
Terrific, thank you.
Hi, Mary, um, so we've seen each other before, I think. Um, can you pull up again the timeline to get this uh put through? Um, because my concern, one of my concerns is the schools are going to be scared to death. Um, they're gonna be going, oh my God, we gotta do all this stuff, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm kind of focused on not only the implementation, because I know you guys have a lot of programs that are quote-unquote can, that you can do fairly quickly to get that up to speed, calendars, things like that. Then the training of the schools, so the schools get some kind of, I know, um, she's got, obviously you alluded to the conference um, that they're going to be at the conference, but how you, number one, have we determined who is interacting with them? Um, you said it's going to be the performance subcommittee.
Been determined who's who's interacting with them, yes.
To, from now until like the sixth or seventh of June?
The time.
Oh, okay, alright, but especially for the, yeah, the rollout. So you've got that between CSD here, okay, so that's done. Um, so beyond the the conference, how else do you intend to really train the individual, the individual schools, that's what I'm concerned with? How does, how is that done? You showed us a lot of people there, is that going to be done all on Zoom, is that going to be done in person? How is that going to be done? Because obviously the school year starts in two months.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so we will be onsite at the conference and then after that, we'll be hosting um formal trainings. So once the site's uh ready to go live, which will be hopefully, um, you know, in the June or July timeframe. Um, and we've, we've actually back mapped, so we've um already understood like when the first time schools will need to be absolutely in it. Um, and we're back mapping all of that. So one, we don't do training too far ahead uh from when they're actually going to be in the site, we really time it, what we've seen work the best. Um, we actually help with communication as well. So we have seen what's worked really well, what hasn't in the previous past of how authorizers communicate it. And we are going to be using the June conference as the preview, so schools get comfortable with it. And what's going to be great about that is we're going to give them, if they have their laptops or even their phones in front of them, we'll be able to walk them through to see like the four or five key things to get them comfortable. It is a really intuitive system, we haven't had issues with schools, um, you know, not be able to understand it. And then we do live training, um, we can do training and we'll be working with the team, whether it's in person or on Zoom. Um, and I know a lot of, at the beginning of school year, school leaders like Zoom because they don't want to have to go offsite while they're trying to ramp up for the school year. So we typically see that as um most effective. We do record them as well, so if someone misses it, they'll be able to see it, but we do all the live training. Um, it typically is around 45 minutes with the the school team members. Um, we make sure that they have, you know, the level one training, they know how to navigate, they need to know how to do the the main things in epicenter. And then sometimes we even schedule a follow-up and a refresh. And so it it is really a simple system for them to get started in using. And we make sure all that training and anybody that wants a refresh or they had somebody miss it, we also provide those videos. And so I am confident that it will be, you know, a good implementation for the schools. And even I've, um, you know, Karina and I and, you know, members of the commission can work through and say, you know, is there, is there certain school leaders that may want to, you know, have extra training? Or they may want to see it, um, even, you know, previously, if they, you know, can help calm the the uh, anybody's mind or ease their mind on how this is um coming. But we have not seen issues as it gets rolled out to schools because once they're in it, they see how intuitive and easy it is for them to use.
Gotcha, um, and uh this is kind of a question that relates to my children who are in their 30s and 40s. Um, do you, um, do you have YouTube, uh, like things that they can do 24/7 on YouTube to, you know, my son can fix anything because of YouTube? Um, do you have that where they can, like, they're caught in the middle of something and they go, God, I don't remember how to do this? And you have a YouTube reminder of that, do you have those?
Yeah, we have a whole help center, so it, anytime they're in the system, they just click the question mark and it'll actually go to our help center. Our help center has everything organized, it's searchable, it has like frequently used, um, and it has help articles, so it can walk them step by step. It also has um videos. And so every topic that they could be in epicenter has videos that they can access 24/7. So if it's not dur- during normal business hours, they can still reference that at all times.
Perfect, thank you.
May I add a little to to that, Commissioner Beck, I I hear you about being concerned about schools readiness. Um, and so although the system is capable of receiving new charter school applications and everything done through the system for that, we, we aren't going to handle the new charter school application um process this year through the system. We haven't trained any of those people yet. So we'll just, and I think that this is really wonderfully coinciding with the new performance framework. And so probably the very first, in addition to like populating the names of the schools, the people at the schools, the location, all that, um, probably one of the first things we'll, we'll receive from the schools will be the ones under the new contract and the assurances regarding um the compliance items. That's, that's what I think the the timeline looks like. So we're, we're easing into this and not expecting to snap our fingers and have the schools fully um utilizing the system July 1.
I don't know, I think I'm jumping in. But um, I I hope with the scheduling of the conference and this session, that there's not a conflict and schools are saying, oh, I really wanted to go to the epicenter training, but I also wanted, so I'm hoping that they're a standalone, you know, highlighted and we just heard people into into that session so that they, even GC members, uh, because I don't know if there's, I don't know how this, the conference is working out for training, but that at least a a GC member would be able to be there as well so that there's the full complement of school personnel there so that there's a variety of questions that can come out from, from folks.
Yeah, so I think we have two breakout sessions, but we can talk about the possibility of during lunch one day. I don't, the only issue with that is that the conferences for all charter schools, not just state authorized, and so the locals won't really.
Well, offer something for the locals.
Well, I mean, we're all going to be eating together, so, so.
That our schools, you know, because I don't, I don't want, I don't want schools to have to sit there and say, gee, I really wanted to go to that, but it was really important for me to go here and hear this. It's really important that all of our schools that are there get the opportunity to hear this. Um, you know, and not say, yeah, sorry, I couldn't do it because I wanted to go here. So that's, you know, that's my two cents on it. Oh, did you have your, Steve?
Hmm, I don't suppose, at least for the state charters, that something could be, I know they're going to hate this, but mandatory. It's like, because it's, you know, this is a really great opportunity for them to learn all this and if they can't. And if they can't, or if they decide for whatever reason, they'd rather go hear about, you know, some other topic, and then they're missing this amazing opportunity. And it's, it's, it's going to fall on us to catch them up. So there's that. And the second thing is, Mary, on the training, do you implement any kind of a train the trainer model as well? So that at each of our school sites, they can have one or two go to people?
Yeah, that's definitely possible. We typically don't see having to do train the trainer at the school level, but we do want to make sure that at least one person is really strong at the school level. And so we'll work with the team to understand like, what would that look like? We absolutely make sure that, you know, the, the authorizing staff has that, that ability to do basic training as well. And we always offer on demand. And so they can definitely, our videos and everything else will be helpful. But yeah, if we are very flexible on how training rolls out and also how, you know, it makes sense at the school level as well.
Terrific. Thank you.
So we absolutely appreciate your time and we look forward to seeing you very soon again.
Yeah, and, and again, thank you. We're excited to be partners in, with Epicenter and your teams. And I think, you know, this will definitely be, you know, elevate the work, the speediness, the efficiencies, and even at the school level. So school leaders will be excited. We always, you know, hear praise from them, from, with our authorizing partners because they're just like, oh, this is so clear. It's easy and I can just, you know, stay focused. And I do want to say before Megan and I depart is, you know, not only is it great to be partners, but I appreciate all the work all of you are doing. This isn't always easy work. It's, it's tough sometimes, but it's worth it. So everything you're doing, I've been, you know, you know, talking with Naomi and seeing all the work that's happened the last couple of years. I just want to say, you know, great work across the board. And everything you're doing, all your decisions you're making, the time you're putting into it, matters for students and families. So we appreciate it and that's why we're so excited to be partners with you. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thanks. Thanks. We appreciate that.
Make sure you go to Duran's downtown when you're here and also Seared for dinner. It's a cute little place and not well known and it's real close to downtown. You'll love it.
I appreciate those recommendations. Thank you so much.
I think she has the Breaking Bad tour scheduled, so. No, I've never heard of Seared. Thanks for that.
And now we're learning something every day. YouTube knows.
Yeah, because we're making our reservations now. All right. Thanks so much.
Mary.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to working with you.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Faulkner is not here yet. So we can't move on to part B, the growth data yet. She's got a presentation and she's going to be here hopefully by about 10:45ish. So we could. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, all right. Yeah, so we, we can move on to the VISTAs designations. The director sent out the email to us all. There was a call, I guess, about a week ago that unfortunately, the federal government didn't accept the VISTA's data from the state. And there had to be, I believe it was an outside contractor that took a look at it. And unfortunately, there's significant changes in the designations. Some of them are going to be for the better. I think more of them are going to be for the, well, yeah, the problem is the top designations are going down. That's because they've eliminated the exemplary or excellent, yeah, they've eliminated the excellent designation. So all of those schools that were designated as excellent are going to drop down the spotlight.
But it's not really like a drop down. It's just, they still are up there.
They are.
They're still in the top.
They are, but they don't get that.
They're just not differentiated.
Yeah.
But they're still in the top 10% of the schools.
For those schools, the differentiation, for the schools, it counts a lot. It really counts a lot. So the director.
Yeah, so.
Has some information, but it is still.
Embargoed. Right, so, so we've heard school leaders during renewal and after the 2223 data was released to question the results. You all have questioned the results and schools had an opportunity to ask for a review of, enough people have asked the PED to take a look at the data. They, they, they didn't feel like it was correct. I could call out a particular school leader who was very certain. And, and there was meetings and the PED, certainly the federal government was, was looking at our compliance with our accountability plan. But the PED decided that they wanted to do a complete relook at the data. And when they did, they found that there were enough errors that they wanted to re-release the data. So schools have had access to the revised data during this embargo period and that ends, I think it already has ended in fact. So, so they're preparing right now to have everything go live on the VISTA's website effective May 20. That's when the revised information could, could also, I don't have the details of like state averages of, that could potentially change. But certainly for individual schools, there will be some changes and the designations will be reset. And as Chair Gibson said, some schools went up in their performance and most schools would probably have a designation that would be considered, that would be considered going down. And so the document in your drive is 2C1, which is draft because again, this was created before all the information was finalized during the embargo period. But this is our understanding of, of what the results are. I can share screen if you would like.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we're calling what was released before the first run and this is the revision. And as Chair Gibson said, we had eight state charter schools within your portfolio that had an excellence designation. And with the revision, there are none. Of course, that is true across the state. We no longer have excellence, which is why it looks like there are, that all eight might have gone down to spotlight. It could be because of performance, but it could be because they don't, we no longer have the designation of excellence. So that's, that's the, the change suggests that there's one that was a spotlight before and is no longer. So we can see the who improved and who declined. Eight did decline and one spotlight declined out of the 13 that are now 22. So this just, this just is the draft of what we have. And next month, our intention is to share with you the names of the schools and what their, not only what their specific performance is, again, by assessment and by subgroup and any growth data that gets released and their designations. But this is the information we're able to provide right now.
So it appears that the schools through, through the annual report that we designate, that we sent a notice of concern because they were, they received the CSI for graduation, none of them fall into that any longer, correct? Because it says 000 there. So any of our schools that, that were designated for graduation rate only, and we had a couple of them, it appears that that has changed from just looking at this chart. So I, if, if, for me, if we were going to change anything, I would think we should send a letter recognizing that, that they're no longer, you know. But other than that, this is like so late. It's not, we're already starting to do the annual reports for next year. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to say, shame on you, you've declined at this point in time. Or recognizing schools that we said you have to fix this. Well, they don't have to fix it because that designation has changed for the better for them. So that we should recognize that. Commissioner Burke?
I feel like looking at this, it actually seems on our side. I know the annual reports will have to like, you know, update those. But from ours and like considering the letters that we sent out, it's very few that looks like we need to really do anything with. Because I do think, like, because it's part of their record of performance, I think if we, those ones that we said we're concerned about this, but that's not correct. Those are the only ones I feel like we really need to mess with. I mean, the, I, I, I almost don't think like, I, I think decline from excellence to spotlight is like a not quite the right word for it. They just, yeah, they're still, right, they didn't decline. It's just not there. Yeah. So I, like, I'm not worried about, like, really taking a look at them or anything like that. And there's just so few that actually, it actually didn't impact that greatly. So I feel like we can make our adjustments pretty quickly for this, which is good.
Certainly through our own annual report mechanism for the schools that are still at that top, top, we can certainly send a letter saying you're doing an excellent job. You know, it may not, they may not get an excellent designation off of VISTAs, but we can certainly, you know, put that in our communication to them. Congratulations, you're in the, you know, you're top 5%, top 10%. You're doing a great job and recognize that. Okay. So I guess do you know, schools that, not for, schools that received letters last school year, I guess, based on their graduation rate that were designated CSI? I know they have, they've, this school year, they've had to attend trainings and I think establish some kind of improvement plan for that. Those schools that were currently in, with a CSI grad designation, do they still carry that for like another year? Or are they cleared out as well?
I don't have an immediate answer to that. I will need to get back with you. Because I'm not exactly sure. I know there was a change, there was a concern around when the designations were given and how long they would last. So I, I think that will be part of what we can talk about next month. And, and actually, Dr. Faulkner is the one that is in the weeds with that. I, I wanted to give that preliminary, but actually that was going to be part of her conversation. I'm wondering if we can wait for her for any more questions that you all might have because she is our liaison to Aria, who is managing the data reset project. And if we could talk instead about one of the other items on the agenda at this point.
Yeah, I'm just looking. So item number three is the second discussion of new and revised policies, which will be effective July 1, 2024, which as everyone knows, that's part of our new process of looking at this through, through our rule and making any of those changes effective the beginning of the, the new school year. So 3A is the performance framework, the draft discussion. And from last week, last month, sorry. So if you look at 3A2, and we talked about this last month, the Performance Framework Subcommittee had met and the decision, as explained last month, was we were, the only changes that we were going to make were those mathematical changes that needed to take place because there was a, either there was a disconnect between the business rules and what was in the performance framework, or there had to be clarity about, when we were looking at, as an example, the, we allowed, through that change, we allowed for the modification of the participation rate for a school like Cesar Chavez. So that other than that, we made no substantial changes to the performance framework with an agreement that we did need to come back and look at growth and look at growth, in particular, looking at what can we do with the higher performing students in, in the, in a school? But at this moment in time, it was not, we just couldn't do it because we were making too big a change and it was going to send things a little up end. So this is a summary in 3A2. Sure.
One of the things that was modified, just to note, is that the federal government has changed the masking number from 10 to 20. And we had hardwired in 10. So, so two things happened. We made it be generic so that it won't be out of sync with anything. And then that also got moved to the business rules. And I think that Dr. Russell went through and looked at things that, you know, could change over time and move those to the business rules rather than have them a footnote in the performance framework. The one thing that I think that you might want to come back to on this forum is after the growth data. I, I have some questions about whether 1A2 or when the growth data for, for schools choosing VISTAs is actually a growth data target. So I think we might come back and talk about that after the growth presentation.
And actually, Julia had a, after this was, this became public, Julia actually spoke with the one school that did three and they said that won't change their reporting, that they, they don't have less than 20. But we do, we, we know that we've got some small schools that, right, that, that 20 is, could mask everything. It could, absolutely. It could possibly mask the whole school. Yeah, so I don't understand.
Sure. Is, is the masking rule for public facing or, because Is, is the masking role for public facing or, because we, like the, the individual, like the data can be reviewed internally under 20, like people who can, like there's internal people that can see that data. But then when it's put publicly is when the masking rules apply.
That I'm not sure of, but.
Wondering if we can still assess it, but then it's just that we can't show that public. We can't show it publicly.
Then how do we make a decision on something that's not public? The information would have to be part of the.
Maybe it's at least that we can get an idea. Like if, if there's a way that we can still be able to get an idea, I just wonder if. I wonder if there's a way we can, or I mean, at least CSD can take a look and like raise concerns and.
If they're raising concerns on something that we can't look at publicly, we can't make a decision because of something that no one can, can see. That's, you know, I fully get it, but I don't see how we could make a decision. And, you know. It's like, what'd you base that on? Well, I can't tell you.
It, it's, it's hard, it's hardwired that it will, that you're not going to review it if it's not masked. So what you're saying is not drafted here. We adjusted it to be whatever the masking group is. And it, so it's in, it's in the business rules on, on page five. And then in the school that's using it, they, they changed their number.
I, I don't, um. I don't understand the rationale, but. Yeah. I was, I was surprised at that. Okay.
Just one more thing. We pulled out the chart to be a separate standalone document so that you can still readily and quickly see what a school has chosen and then, or is going to choose. And then after the negotiations, just to see exactly what they've done in terms of which, which state accountability system they chose, if they have their mission specific goal and if they had a condition. So that's just a standalone document. Dr. Russell has fixed the, or made the mission goal document so that it can be searched. And this is not approval of a form, but more of a conversation around whether you guys want to look at it or not. But some of the mission specific goals, and this was raised in several of the negotiations with the schools. They are saying our mission specific goal is so hard to meet. It takes so much effort by everyone in our school that it, to score it really high and have it be a high level of performance is really a lot. They, they were actually asking, can you take into consideration how much effort our school and students and staff put into these things? And there are other mission specific goals that are, are more like a survey or a one-time thing that the schools do. That, that doesn't mean that the score, you know, in order to get a high score on that survey, the school didn't do a lot. But it just keeps coming back to me that, you know, do you want to discuss that or not? You have the tool available to you here. This document will also be really helpful for the negotiating teams so that you can sort it and say, here are the six schools that all do an SEL goal or here, so that you can at least see what you've done. But this document will be really useful in contract negotiations so that the negotiating commissioners can see what the range is. But there's that second conversation or the one I raised first, which is, did you want to address that, that that issue that was raised by several schools? And I'm not quite sure how you would address it. But I'm not sure that all the mission specific goals are apples to apples in terms of effort.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Isn't it incumbent upon the school when they're setting their mission goal not to make it something so incredibly crazy that they've got to work so, 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 so hard? I mean, it just seems like, you know, Crimea River, make a different goal. Do something, we want it to be challenging, but also attainable. And we want it to reflect, you know, what the school's goal is. I, I just, I don't, sorry, that one just doesn't resonate with me.
So I'm going to tell you what, what was heard was from the commission, this isn't hard enough. And the school saying, we proposed something that was hard, you're asking us to go even harder. So you don't understand that what we're doing already is difficult. But so, but you're sitting here up here and saying, oh no, that's not hard enough. And they're, and they communicated back to us saying, this is, this is already hard for us. We haven't, we haven't set a low bar. You're telling us we've set a low bar.
Now I'm recalling the school. So I'll bet on what you just said.
You know, that's, that's where, it's not coming from.
I hear you. But if it's, I, I believe that school had set their bar at 70. Am I, am I recollecting correctly? It doesn't matter, but it's like, I'm just kind of having these flashbacks to that school and conversation. I understand that certain things might be very difficult, you know, based on what they're doing. But at the same time, if only 70% of the people can meet it or 60 or whatever it might have been, then they need to reexamine how they set that goal, I think.
But see, this is their, I'm on a way different wavelength on this than I think most people. Cause this is their mission goal. So it's on them. They want to show us how they're doing their mission. To me, for me to sit, to sit up here and say, it's not rigorous enough. You, you know, I don't know their school that well. So this is where they have that autonomy to say, this is our goal. This is how we're going to show that we're going to serve our community. And I have, I have difficulty in trying to put schools into lanes for quote unquote rigor for a mission goal. Because yes, if you look and you say, oh my God, if I was that school, I'd be able to like rock that. But I'm not that school. And another school looking at it isn't that school either. So that's where I, you know, I don't want schools to say, come in with a mission goal that everyone's going to walk into school happy every day. You know, that's, you know, go away. But other than that, that's what makes schools unique and what the schools have to be able to, they know their schools best. I'm going to try to trust that. And for me to sit here and say, well, why did you pick a goal that it's 70%? They decided that, you know, that's what they feel will, will meet their needs. And I think it's this area more than any place else where there's, you can show the greatest flexibility and acknowledgement that schools have the autonomy to do this. So Commissioner Beck and then Commissioner Brower.
Oh yeah, real quickly. I think this is a place, I think our, our, our main focus here when we're doing the contract negotiations is to ensure that their mission specific goal attaches to their mission. That's what it is. And that's what we have to look at. I think in, uh, to your point, we have to give them some grace and, and have them know that they know their school better than we do. And and I think from the experience that I had in March with these, I, I, I think those negotiations were healthy. They were pretty healthy. But at the end of the day, I think that we have to trust the school to know what is best for them. And again, our role is to make sure that the mission specific goal attaches directly to their unique, that's the whole key, their unique mission.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with the Secretary. I think that the other thing I, I think about is that we're not giving carte blanche in terms of this either. I think there is some specifics that they need to do. And we also, I think this is the area where I'm most proud of the charter school division in supporting them and creating this. There's a lot, there's a ramp to this. There's, before the contract negotiations start, Missy and the person that we had on contract, Rachel, uh, they, they worked with the schools. And I think that's a great thing. I, I don't know what other authorizers do to support in that way, but I, I think that's a special thing that we offer. And I think it's not perfect. It's not, uh, uh, but I don't think that, you know, Albuquerque Sign Language Academy and Tiara Dentrel should have the same goals or the same thresholds based upon what they know about their schools. But we can verify that if it's holding water the best that we can through the lens of the technical assistance we provide in creating those prior to when they sit down with the vice chair, other people during negotiations. And I think that's something that I think is good. It's murkier, it's murkier. It's not, it might, you know, maybe it's a little bit more fuzzier. But I think qualitatively in terms of what, what we want to see in our state, that's just part of the, that's part of the, the bargain that we play. And then we all obviously still have the academic results that are a little bit more specific and less, less murky, I think. So I think those combined things are great things. And I just wanted to share that I think the technical assistance helps us stay honest and helps the school stay honest in terms of what, what this looks like based upon their very specialized, unique goals.
The only thing that I might add is I think going through contract negotiations over the past three years with different schools, there have been some, you know, you see different schools, right? And you see different mission specific goals and obviously the content is going to vary. But I still think that while the content can vary based on each individual school's specific mission, I still think that there should be some, I guess, bar or foundational rigor that we are tasked to ensure that all schools, regardless of their mission, regardless of how they're going to go about pursuing that mission, that we should still behoove us ourselves to actually ensure that that goal is rigorous enough. I know that, right, we, there's some aspect, well, the schools know their school best. Well, yes, that's true, but we also in comparison to other schools, we, we can't take that away, right? Because we see lots of other schools. So there are some schools that it seems like that we've seen even this past contract negotiation session, that their mission specific goals are more rigorous than maybe some other schools. And I think we have to keep that in mind that we can't lower the bar just because the mission specific goal is different. Right? That's okay. There are going to be variations, but there needs to be some level of rigor that's standard across our school. Right?
Commissioner Burt.
That's my thinking exactly. Like, and just having seen them, how some schools start and then where they kind of end up after negotiations. I think that is, I mean, I think we've actually done a good job of that of, but I think the more challenging ones to do, because I do think the school leaders and governing boards, they come in with different ideas of how they want to play at this. Like there's some, some of, um, some of the charter administrators are like very hard on themselves and they set a very, like an extremely high bar because they have this like high achieve it, you know? And so sometimes we've talked schools down a little to be like, you're being really, like you're being too rigorous on yourself. Like sometimes that happens. But then we do have, I think some that may be a little bit more fear-based and they're scared to like take that risk and like make it challenging because they, they do care about making sure they're successful. And so I think there is like that kind of, um, there's some that come in too high and we bring them down a little. There's some that come in too low and we do have to bring them up a little. And then I think there's a lot that do it, come in right. Because I think the work that they do beforehand has made a big difference. Like over the last couple of years, that like pre-work that they're doing. I think we're getting more, like some of those, um, concerns that would be present at negotiation kind of get tackled before now. And so by the time the negotiations happen, Missy and Rachel have already talked to the schools. Like the things that we would say, they're already telling them like, hey, this kind of like, you know, we're cut, we don't know what the PC is going to say, but we kind of think that this might be too low or this might be. And so I think that has helped that, that making it easier. But I a hundred percent agree with KT. I think that sometimes schools will come in with a different mindset of what rigor is. And so I think that's what makes it best for us is to like level set that. But I do, I do, I, and I think it's important we do that because I think schools can, tend to resent each other when they find out that like, oh, that school is doing that. Like that's all they have to do. And like, you know, and so I think if we make it to where some schools are seen as like easy goals to hit, it creates a little resentment in other schools who are choosing to have like, they're proposing a, a high bar. And then they see other schools coming in lower and they're like, hey, why did we, why did we do that then? You know, why didn't we come in with a lower one? So I think it's important to level set in that way of like what KT's saying just for, but I think, I think we've kind of done that naturally through the process that we have. But I think one of the things that I know it's in the, I believe it's in the, when I read through the red line of one of them, is that if it's a new goal, that they need to have some kind of baseline data for us. Cause that's, those are the hardest ones. Is when they come in and they're like this, and it's a great goal. It's a great mission specific goal. And that, but then that's when the, the targets feel arbitrary. Cause we're just like, we just don't know. And so it feels, it makes, those are the ones that I feel most uncomfortable. Cause I'm like, I don't know if this is a, if this is difficult for you to get, or if this is easy for you to get, or if it is just right. Like I have no, no awareness outside of, of just having to trust it. And that, that is the most concerning one. So I do like the idea of like, if it's something that they haven't done before, that they do present some kind of, and even if it's just before, like in working with Missy and Rachel, I mean, it's, if, if that can be dealt with at that point, that's also great. You know, like they don't have to necessarily bring it before us. Like, but if, if we know that like, okay, you know, we're going to take the Accuplacer and in the past two, three years, this is what it's looked like. So we feel like this is what the goal should be. But there were a couple that didn't have that and those are the only ones that made me uncomfortable.
Yeah. And that's what we talked about last month is that, you know, we need, the schools have to do that work.
I support that addition. I noticed that addition when I was reviewing the work that you guys did last month and I, I appreciated that.
Yeah. And it's, it's still, you know, it's still really tough because when you're putting the word rigor and you're taking a school that's doing SEL surveys, you know, is because I, sometimes I get concerned with attaching rigor. Schools think that they have to only use some kind of assessment. And see, that's where I, uh, the, the messaging has to happen. You know, it's right. Because it's like, oh, that's not a rigorous goal. Well, you know, for my school, we're working really hard to get to this place. So that's where, you know, the my, my mindset, you know.
Open to the content. I think that is like, content, I, like, I don't think I'd ever tell a school not to do a certain, unless it really is misaligned with the mission.
Yes.
But it's the targets that, that's what.
Yeah.
Be rigorous.
Yeah.
And it's always, and I think we do a good job of like, well, do you think it's, it would be like a little hard for you to get? Uh, uh, you know, the exceed, like we want to make it a little challenging, but we don't want to make it impossible.
Right.
Anything. So I think it's the targets is the rigor part of it. Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that was the, and you're right. That was the challenge this year. And you don't want to discourage schools from trying something new. You know, but you have to have done some homework to get yourself to that so that you have, you know, how did you figure this target out? You know, it's, did you just like pull it out of the air? So just give us that background to help us. Director.
Yeah. Thank you. This is a healthy discussion to reflect on the mission goals. Think about where we were. even a couple of years ago where charter schools weren't expected within your portfolio, weren't expected to have mission goals. So you know, we asked, why, why do charter schools exist? And one of the reasons is so that they could be innovative and to show how they can make a difference with kids. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that Chair Gibson actually reminded us after this round of contract negotiations how important it was that we set the RBA approach to setting the mission-specific goals as part of our performance framework. And although I know there was a presentation that many of us were not at, but that Naomi and Jody did with the schools prior to them working with Missy and Rachel to sort of bring that out a little bit. And at Chair Gibson's request, she said, maybe the conference can have a session on that. So I have reached out to Dr. Angelo Gonzalez, who is the person that taught me about RBA. And he is planning to do a session at the conference around mission goals, looking at it through the RBA lens. I do think that there's lots of ways to define or to be able to gauge the rigor. Like it's like, it could be the target. Is it 70% or 90%? But there's also a rigor associated with how many kids are doing something versus what is the outcome of the kids doing something. So I think that continued reflection in preparation for mission-specific goal negotiation for next round. I, I really appreciate that. Just wanted to share those, those thoughts.
That actually went into the veteran corporation of RBA. So, and I think that is, we had one specifically responded to those points in their work, in their, in the workbook. And I'm sure other schools hopefully used it, but it wasn't as apparent. So I think schools need a little lift with that. And I think we also didn't pay that much attention to it when we were, when we were looking at it.
If you're moving on to document three B, which is that revised mission template, the second tab are the questions where they're developing their goal and how they got to it. But then as well, the front page of the mission-specific goal both has that description about if it's a new goal, you need to provide that information. That it has to be one goal, but it can be assessed differently. And then we tried to change the bottom on line 34 where they have to tell you annually, go back to the RBA reflection. So not only in creating it, but in scoring it year by year. So those are the changes to the template.
And we, and speaking of scoring template, we have asked for, we asked for schools to be surveyed to see what other assessments they might be using. So we can get a step up. We know illuminate is one of them. But in case there's some others that we're not that familiar or aware of, that we can get a step up and start working on those so that we're ready and that they'll be ready by the time contract negotiations happens. And maybe we could, maybe we could actually ask ECS and AMAL also to get that out on their call as well. So that there's, we're getting double so that they, you know, we can get an idea of what else is out there that we're not familiar with. So that we can get these scoring templates done for them. Now we're on to C, which is the contract.
There weren't any changes from last month. There, there weren't any corrections to that from last month. It's just the second review.
Okay. And we are on to the renewal application, which is D.
And I don't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing you were looking at in the renewal application was the transition year checklist. Wanted to go over the document on the transition year checklist. It impacts both the renewing schools, but also into the next item as well. Let me just get there. They're kind of are related. So what, what I went back to pull is what is required on the transition year checklist, there's a section that's required in the contract negotiations. It's required to be provided effectively in March. So on that chart, it is items through item A7 through A22. Then we were discussing, is there a second time that the school or a third time, is there, are there ways in which you can get the rest of the information? And the rest of the information is on, starting with line 24 down to line 38. And it's, it looked like that you're, you're going to have authority over that school July 1. You're going to ask them to do an assurance in September. And you could use that assurance document to say, have you done the rest of these things? Have you established your finance committee, your audit committee? Is your student information system aligned with STARS? Do you have procurement procedures? So some of it, a group of it is going to be essential to the contract and the rest of it looks like it could be part of the assurance document. What is actually in the list that you're going to ask for the assurances? There's actually even another document to look at later, which is how are we approaching schools and particularly schools that are transitioning over and what kinds of policies do you want them to have? Right now you have this list that is lines 26 through 38. But I think we'll spend a little bit of time in a minute in looking at what do you really want schools that are coming over to look at? What seemed to make some sense to me was you have a March contracting things. The schools know about that. They are going to need that in order to contract. And then you don't talk to them again until September on the assurance document after they are one of your schools.
So I'm just double checking with the board of finance. That's just the application. It's not the, that we voted on it yet by contract negotiations. They've just got all their documents together? Or is that, is the expectation that by February, then we've voted on their board of finance? Or is it, so that's what I'm not a hundred percent clear on that one.
I'm not positive about, about the question, but a school has to be a board of finance in order for you to have them have a
Right. No, I'm asking, are we here? Are we telling them that we have to have voted to approve the board of finance by February because we're doing the negotiations? Or that they've just got all the documentation? And that it's, it'll, it's coming and we'll vote on it maybe in March, maybe in April. That's because schools would need to know that they have to have all that information in to CSD by early February for us. If we're saying they need to have had a board of finance in place before contract negotiations, we will have had to have voted on it in February. So are we just saying they need to have it all done?
These are just documents. Documents required. And for example, tomorrow, you're voting on two schools for their board of finance and you're immediately voting on their contract. So it's the same exact process. But the conversation was what can you require of a transitioning school? And you can require them to have all of their board of finance documents right before you contract because you can't vote on their contract. You can, the contract requires that they identify their head administrator, their business manager, their chief procurement officer. So everything in that top section is required as part of contracting. So it's the, these are the documents that they will provide you early before they are your school. The rest of them will be done in the assurance document.
So the occupancy certificate actually comes with the renewal application, doesn't it? Isn't it attached to the renewal application? I thought that was one of the documents.
What was the document? What was the question in document?
Occupancy certificate. Isn't that, they, they submit that with the renewal application?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, granted it's there by, by contracting, but it is, it's already populated in the renewal application.
So do you want it on this?
I don't think it needs to be here because we already have it. We haven't, we require it for the renewal application.
So timing wise, are you guys comfortable with kind of this two-phased approach? What's required in contracting and then using the assurance pool for the rest of it?
Yep.
Okay. Let me take you to the next tab, the requirements compared. So I just wanted you to see and kind of see what you want to, to do. There are three ti, three different times that you ask schools for things in a checklist. The first one is the implementation year checklist. And I will tell you that that is by far and away the most comprehensive document that you have. And it, if you go down on, on column B, you will see all of the things that it requires throughout that implementation year. And it is extensive. I'm exhaustive in a good way. It sets those brand new schools up to have done everything. The next document, the next column C is for schools that are transitioning over. And you can see anything that is color-coded is in, or anything with text in it is required in the transition year checklist. But there are things that are not there. For example, line 29, a curriculum development plan is not in the transitioning school checklist. A dual credit policy is not there. Checking in on emergency drills, a gun-free safety, uh, schools policy, health services policies, homelessness. There's a lot of things that you could put into that assurance document in September that presently isn't there. The next column is what you are asking every school to do and what you're highlighting every school to do in the performance framework assurance. And that is anything that is color-coded. So the thing to look at there in my view, actually I, is, is there anything that is not color-coded that is important to you? That you also would want to add to there? But you can see it actually covers quite a bit of things. The final two columns are if a school is a district school and is transitioning over to you, they are presently relying on their district policies. They still could, they still could say, I'm not going to do my own gun safety policy. I'm going to use, you know, I'm from APS, I'm going to use APS. APS, Santa Fe Public Schools are the two that I checked. They have hundreds of policies. They probably have every single possible policy. So is this, you know, so with, I'm just going to say kind of the gold standard being the implementation year checklist. Does that, does that make you want to add anything else to the transition year checklist or the three C checklist? Yes or no? There's actually quite a few that are required across the board.
I'm wondering what if, I, I don't think, I, I don't necessarily have opinion of like adding or removing things from here. But I'm just wondering if these are all like the required, like if all the stuff in, in column A is required technically. I, my, I always just go back to like, I have this worry of like, for example, I mean, just because it's, it's unfortunately something that affects schools deeply. Like if we're not, if we don't, if, if we're only looking at their gun-free schools policy, just on the implementation, implementation year checklist, and then it just, oh, yeah, like, I mean, essentially anything, like that's what it feels like to me is like, well, who is looking for that? And I'm just wondering, I don't necessarily think this needs to be changed, but I'm wondering if there's a way in epicenter, if we can list all these, all these items and the schools just put their policy into there just so we have them. And then it could kind of, it would highlight where they're missing something. But it's not necessarily something that's like part of this, like the checklist, it's not a part of all this stuff, but it's just like, if they're able to like put these policies, in that way, they're kind of in this database. And they're just kind of in there. We know that they have them. Schools can update them as they update them. But it feels, I feel like this weariness of not having them stored somewhere, that they do have them. So that's what I'm, I don't know if it necessarily, I don't know if it changes any of this. I don't, I don't envision that. But I just, that's what I'm kind of wondering is if it's not like a, I don't know, not like a scored thing that's part of the, you know, but it's just like that it's there. Yeah. Like a repository to where it's like, you know, because I, I would just hate for like something to happen at a school. And then they're like, you know, the homeless education assistance policy, you know, like if that doesn't, if that's not working in a school, we get a complaint, CSD gets a complaint. And then they're like, well, who's looking at this? Right? Like who's, who's overseeing this? And that's what I'm wondering. I don't, but I think it can, I'm open to it being separate from this. Like keep, keep this how it is. But then all those things, just have them, they could put them in once, right? And then we have them stored and then just let the schools know like, as you update these, please update them in epicenter. And, and it not be like a burdensome thing year over year where you're constantly checking it, but they're in there.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burt?
Thank you Chair. I, I agree with that. I also think there is a really positive consequence to that, which is a knowledge management of like storage of things that every single school would like to see a warehouse of all these different policies and procedures and to learn from. I think the only thing that I would say, and I, there's like two things. One's probably not super relevant, but I, I'll get that one out of the way first. I think there is something, like I think about schools that have come, like started with us and gone and then left us and went to another, another authorizer. And in one time they're coming back to us. So we have one who did that. They also have a lot of these things in place unless they are way antiquated, like, but many of these things were in existence in 2018, 19. These were requirements. So they, they ought to be able to dust, dust them off a little bit and update them. So I do, I don't think, I don't think, I'm not asking for another layer, but I think there's a nuance sometimes with the charter school division. As we look at these things and as we think about this, at least for me, I think that that should be a little bit easier for a school who kind of transitioned back and forth within one session, within one contract season to make this a little easy. The other thing I was thinking about was, Julia, to your question, the, the, like the, your yes or no question, I think the one like question I have is that there are some things in here that, many things you can use from APS or from other schools and like I know the uh, public charter schools in New Mexico, I think they have a warehouse of different things uh, to, to pull from. I think there are some things in here that have to be specific to schools, I guess. I know that the safety school, the safety plan, I know when I was in Karina's seat, I was like, hey, let me, let's get one school and provide it to the other. And they're like, hard no, you can't, it has to be completely separate. I'm like, I get it, but I don't, but I get it and I'll comply. So I wonder what, if there's anything else like in, in this list that are like very specific? If it's, you know, the Mckinney Vento, I think it's a little bit more nuanced that it might have to be very specific to a school. So I might, I think maybe that could help us uh, with support from the PED staff. Like what are the ones that are like non-negotiable, have to be um, start to finish specific to a school? And the commission, you all might know that more than me at this stage. Uh, and then what are the ones that are a little bit more boilerplate that we just need to have in place? And you can borrow and change the dates and the names and stuff like that. So I think that's where my mind goes in terms of that.
Sure. I think that you could do what you were just saying and link that to what, what Becca was just saying, which is epicenter could say, are you using the district policy or have you drafted your own? And because one of our questions about the schools tomorrow is were they, are, are they in compliance now? Yes, they are because their districts have these hundred policies. I mean, it's just overwhelming what Santa Fe Public Schools and Albuquerque Public Schools, I mean, it goes on and on and on. Is that, there's actually, it's actually in here, it's the so many policies. So the answer is yes, they comply. The issue is, are they going to comply on July 1? But you could choose, I'm, I'm not going to go make a new procurement policy, I'm going to use my district policy. But we, epicenter could make them do that and that could tie in exactly with you saying, no, you can't do that on safe schools, please upload your safe schools plan. So, because what, um, I didn't see a reason, I, I guess, I want to say the best thing would be to have schools comply with kind of this gold standard list from the implementation year checklist, you know? It has everything that they need, but they don't have to go do a ton of work for it. Uh, they could just tell you, yeah, we're aware that there's an school athletic equity policy and procedures. And here's how we're going to deal with it. So epicenter could make them aware of it, they could identify how they're doing it. And then your nuance of no, this has to be school specific could, could identify it. Because going back and looking and really looking at that transition year checklist, I wasn't posit, uh, it felt pretty good, but it wasn't as good as the implementation year checklist.
And I'm going to agree that I think it's a really good exercise for boards. When we were looking at, when we were talking about the indicators of distress, to me, this is a really good exercise for a board to do a review. Do we have this policy? Do we need to update it and create a calendar for that year on what policies they need to update? What ones they can just upload right away and say, here, these are, these are done. But, but they know, because I know it has come back to us at times. We've had schools say, well, you approved our policy. And it's like, well, we really didn't. But when they were a new applicant, they uploaded all those policies, but no one does a review. And that has to be the, the board is supposed to do the review of their policies and know they're in compliance. This is not a, we're going to look at all of yours and say, this is good, we don't want that. I agree, this is not a compliance issue in terms of we're going through and saying, that stinks, you know? Right, yeah, it's just, but I think this is a really, really good um, project for all schools because we all know schools have, schools can have policies that are 15 years old and some of them are fine because things haven't changed. But there's, there's other things that, you know, that need to be tweaked even just a little bit. And I agree, it's um, you know, you have to worry about schools that haven't really looked at those safety policies and make sure that, that, you know, it's appropriate for the safety of the students in their school. And that's what we're really hoping happens.
I like considering this as more of like an indicator of distress.
Yeah.
Instead of it being a performance framework item. I think that's what I think is like ultimately, because I think it, it could be, it, it could really shine a light, number one for the school, right? Like maybe they, they have a million things going on all the time, like, like, so maybe they don't even know that they have an outdated, like they don't, you know? So that, I do like that, number one. But also I think it's like, especially like, once again, I'm just like envisioning what epicenter will look like for you all. And you'd just be able to see like a school, their list and where they're missing stuff, right? And like, if they're missing the head administrator evaluation policy, that's an indicator of distress, honestly. You know, like, that's something that it, it's more, but I feel like that's more that internal and then working with the schools, like being able to be proactive. Because I, that's what my concern is, is the reactive part of it, right? If they don't have that policy, something comes up and then they're like, well, why weren't you guys not looking to see that they have that policy? So it's, it's that more proactive measure which follows like our indicators of distress work.
It's one of the things that recently, because the background check, employment background check, a lot of schools have a policy that doesn't include who checks the head administrator. And so, because, because you don't think about it, right?
Right.
They're the person who's doing it all, they're the one who are reviewing everything. And I'm going around saying, but who's going to do that for the head administrator? And Bill, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, though, I guess I want to suggest that you, that we not approve a transition year checklist document tomorrow, but allow the epicenter kind of idea to roll out. The, the document right now.
I, I, I actually do not mean that for the transition year checklist. The transition year checklist, I agree with, no, I, I want that to stay how it is. That what I'm talking about is completely separate, like completely separate. It's um, it's not on this, it's not on this at all.
It's for all schools.
Yes, it's for all schools. And, and ideally, it's like a, a one-time bigger burden to get them in. Um, and then it's, it becomes that repository, right? And so, but it isn't, I actually, I like the transition year checklist, I, I like the implementation year. I think those are great documents. I don't, I don't think those are necessarily, I mean, I'm okay if that's, if these are um, utilized in epicenter and that's how you work with schools, that's fine. But I'm talking, what I've, what I'm thinking is something completely separate.
I'm, I'm not looking at expanding the transition year checklist at, at this point in time. I just think that would be
Okay.
burdensome for schools to do that. I think they simply say, here's all our district policies. And then throughout that next year, they can start looking at and saying, do we need this? Don't we need this? And, um, and I think that's a really good idea to see um, if we can get that kind of list of what can be boilerplate policies, that it doesn't matter what school you are, this is, you know, this is what you have to do. And then those policies that really have to be nuanced, I think that's a good guidance for schools because then they can say, oh, I can keep the district policy. Or I'll go, you know, when epicenter's up and running and we've got those, we can hopefully have those in there. They can say, oh, I'm just going to use this because it's, why reinvent the wheel? But then those ones that are very, very specific, and I'm sure it's a much shorter list, that those are the ones that they really should highlight and say, this is what we have to work on first. Because these are the ones that are really affect our school the most. Yeah, yeah. And, and I do think that's a much shorter list.
Oh, that if you approve this transition year checklist, you're going to approve the top things that are required for the contract. And then you are still requiring a subset of all policies and they are identified on tab on, on document 3D1, if Missy could put that back up. That is the subset of all policies that you are saying are important enough that you want to transition the first tab. And if you go down to, yeah, all of the yellow documents are ones that, so you're saying the distance and hybrid learning policy is super important and you want a transitioning school to provide that? That one feels kind of.
They're gonna provide everything, but in the transition year checklist, it's going to be those specific things that they'll move on. But everything that we're, we, every policy really is going to be required. So, I don't know, I don't know how that plays into the two, but I just don't want to, I don't really want to change the documents a ton for, I don't know.
So I think the question is, how much or what do you want to collect and when, right? So I think with the two schools that transitioned, we had a pretty lengthy transition year checklist and we saw that um, it took time and a, a lot of effort to compile all those things. And, and part of the discussion on the compliance indicators, which includes a lot of policies is, do we collect them or do we not collect them? And now we have epicenter, which could be a repository so that a lot of them could go there. And so I do think with the schools that are transitioning or with any of the schools, I, I think, thinking about a reasonable timeline so we aren't overburdening the schools might be something that the commission thinks about. And I also um, know that there's, you know, this business of, are we saying we approve these policies? Or this is a good policy and what can be up there? For example, the safe schools plan, we're not going to get a copy of it, right? Like it doesn't even get emailed, it gets uploaded to some sacred website that only the school and the person at the PED that reviews it sees. Why? Because it has an escape route for an active shooter situation, so that shouldn't be made public, right? So instead, maybe we would get an email upload that says, your safe schools plan has been reviewed and it's in good standing, you're, you're good. So I think that there are lots of lists that we should take a look at. And I guess the question is, um, what is important for the transitioning schools when you want to approve them? Obviously, the Board of Finance, I think that Julia went through this list and identified those things that are really important for when the school is transitioning. And then the other thing should be in the category of how do we want to treat all other schools?
Sure. So I think for transitioning schools, and I honestly, I'm, would be more open to just CSD's recommendations of what should be on the transition year checklist for, for schools that are already charters coming to the state. And then, because it's not every single thing on that whole document. And so getting those ones by the time they open, I think is a priority. Which is once again, why I would say CSD, I would be open to like just CSD's recommendation on like, by the time they open, what are the like must haves? And then by the end of their first fiscal year, they need to have everything. Like they need to have uploaded all the, all those rest of them.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. So we spent some time talking about it, the things that are in green, I think are, are what needs to be in place for the transitioning schools. And then I think put everybody else on a timeline to have until the end of fiscal year 25 to upload everything else. That seems to me like a reasonable timeline, not just for the transitioning schools, but for all schools as we are getting used to and full, more fully utilizing epicenter to be the repository.
And I think it's especially important for this first year to give them one school year to do it. Because if they look and they're like, oh, we don't have that, or, oh my gosh, it's out of date, they're going to need time in their boards to create a policy or to modify a policy. So I think it gives them like, to give them by July 1 of next year, to have it like completely up and, and feel good about what they're putting in there, gives the board the time to like add, add to their plates and, and do a good job on it.
Right, and to resurface the policies that actually we did work with public charter schools in New Mexico. I think uh, Mr. Paul is, did he have his baby? Is on paternity leave and so he hasn't been able to, um, I haven't been able to get the copies of the policies. But we did work with him under the CSD grant to create some of those policy templates. And I know that Public Charter Schools NM is also working on some of those. So that would give a year for supporting schools as they are looking at their policies and revising their policies to connect with the tools that have already been created or are in creation right now.
I mean, I do agree that particularly the financial components that a district charter doesn't have to do, the, the school has to, that has to be done right away. Because they haven't had the finance committee, they haven't had the audit committee. They may not, um, you know, they're, they're, depending, I guess, on the district. If the district does the background checks, so that they have not had to do the background checks themselves, you know, that's something that the school needs to obviously get, get done right away. You know?
I'm just thinking for tomorrow, I, my suggestion is we refine this, this transition year checklist. Because if you approve it tomorrow, you're going to
Make them do all that.
You're going to make them do all of that. So that the things that are in the contract and that are required in, in March, that, that's said and in our documents. The next one, there are some that you were just talking about, but there are some that you weren't talking about. So I'm just thinking, let's do that further refinement rather than approving it tomorrow. In, in particular, because you could also discuss with the epicenter people, how could we make this be? I just don't want you to approve a document that is going to be obsolete based on how you want epicenter to make it happen.
So this is what, the one thing I, I feel deeply about epicenter, it will conform to what we need. We do not need to do anything based off of epicenter. I, like, I literally don't care what it does. We need to do this based off of best policy and best like, like, and then they'll, they'll modify the program for us, not the other way around.
Right, but if they are going to do.
I think we have to tell them what we want it to do.
Yeah, I think, or to say it a different way, you already have in place the gold standard and the implementation year checklist, it lists everything. If that is the list and that if a school comes over, you were just talking about how much time to have them confirm that they're a transitioning school, that they've done it. That, if you approve this transition year checklist tomorrow, it might be outdated by what, how you want it to operate almost immediately.
Can you talk more about that? What do you, I don't.
Well, for example, um, well, let's, if you look at this list, the finance, the finance committee established is important, one of the commissioners just said that. The audit committee established, the commission just said that. A student information system, I don't know how anybody's not aligned to stars, but, so is that important to make sure a transitioning school has that in September? I don't know. Something CSD could get back to you next month. Procurement procedures, probably. Code of Ethics, probably. Safe School Plan, probably. Head Administrator, Staff Performance, probably. Background Check, Missy was just saying that's, you know, that, that's really important. I just think that you have a short list here, let's give them till next month to go through and say, forget the distance and hybrid learning policy, that's not super important. And the tobacco, drug and alcohol free one, I don't know, just have them come back with a more refined list. The green is correct at the top because we already require it. Just look at this section from 26 to 38 and refine that. And come back to it. And then several of the things could be removed because they're already in 3C and they're already in the list of 3C. So like, for example, a complaint policy, you're asking every school, so we don't have to ask a transitioning year school. They're going to be asked anyway. So I'm only saying, do you want to approve it tomorrow or do you want to prove it in June?
I would prefer CSD's recommendation.
So do we want to pause here and let Dr. Faulkner?
Sure, and there's cake too.
Well, I, I need like a five minute break. Dr. Faulkner, start.
All right. Should, should we cut the cake? Do we want to, do you want to post?
Which is the growth data? And we've asked Dr. Faulkner to work on this so that we get a clearer picture of what is available and what we might else want to be looking at and how do we get it? So, good morning and thank you.
Okay, big bright light. Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, so just to get started, the focus I, I prepared today is on what PED is, how they're measuring growth. Just a, next slide please. Just a reminder of some of the benefits and requirements of measuring growth. The student growth percentile is the, we call SGP's, is the gold standard. And what it does is it ranks, ranks each student based on how much their scores increase over time. It compares students to others' students with similar baseline scores. By doing so, it addresses student growth across the full range of performance fairly. As we know that students who are in the top of their class at, at baseline may not grow as much as students at the bottom. So it compares apples to apples. And one of the requirements of the student growth percentile is that it, you have to have two or more tests of the same assessment over time. Next slide, please. And so historically, what the Department of Public Education has done in terms of measuring growth of beginning in, well, I'm just, I'm going back to 219, but of course, there's history before that. In 219, they may, they use student growth percentiles to accept, to indicate growth in students using the PARC assessment and also the TAMLA, which is a comparable assessment to the PARC. In 2020 and 2021, there were no calculations of student growth. In 2022 and 2023, there were similar types of measures of growth, which are not individual student growth, but rather they looked at changes in proficiency rates in schools across years. So in 2021, there was an estimate of what the proficiency rate was, was at, at that time versus what they actually measured it to be in spring. So they calculated a difference in an estimate of the proficiency rate in spring of 2021 to spring of 2022. And that was the growth indicator in 2022. Any questions about that? Okay. And then then 2023, very similar, except we actually had the measure of proficiency rates in spring of 2022. And they just looked at the change from spring of 2022 to spring of 2023. The difference in proficiency rates across a school. And again, note measure of individual student, student growth. And then in 2024, for the current school year, although the plan has not been finalized, it's still in draft and is in process of being finalized and, and will go for public comment. SGP's will be calculated for students in grades four to eight using the NMSSMSSA and. Oh, yeah. Good. I was, I'm glad you asked that question because I have mine. Okay, so NM, I mean NM, MSSA stands for Measures of Student Success and Achievement. And that's the assessment. So.
So that's an actual test?
That's an actual.
SSA is an actual test. Okay.
And so that was assessed last year and in the current school year in students in grades three to eight. And so the draft plan is intending to calculate student growth percentiles using those two years of data for students in grades four to eight. And then in addition to that, PED is exploring ways to assess growth in students in other grade levels. And so that's explained in the next side, slide.
So can I just ask, I'm just trying to remember, in the 2021, 22, was there a statewide assessment done?
Yes.
So NAMASA was done in, in 21, 22?
Yes.
So if, if, if that was done, because that's what I thought, if it was done in 21, 22, why wasn't there a measure of individual student growth in, in 22, 23? If we had 21, 22 data?
That's an excellent question. I don't know the reason why it was not calculated that way. And so this is looking at anticipated growth measures for the current school year. And so if you look across the grade spans or the grade levels, SGP is possible in grades four to eight and possibly in grades K through two. It's being explored currently using an, I believe, an adapted student growth percentile model that is time dependent, so a different methodology that's currently being explored. In grades three, it's not possible because there was a dis, different assessment during the prior school year. In grades nine to 10, it's not possible because there is no assessment. And then in grades 11, it's not possible because there's no prior year assessment for comparison as baseline. And then in grades 12, again, no assessment.
The concern that I have is that in the performance framework for student growth, 1B1 relying on VISTAS, it's not going to work for high school students. And we have three schools that are high schools that you just approved their contract that are using 1B1 and it cannot be scored. You, you can do the elementary schools because it's just one grade missing. So CSD could figure that out, but it's not going to work for those three. Now, one of the schools did SAT and PSAT as a separate goal that they chose. And, and you, the PEC could go back to the three schools that chose 1B1. 1A1 works because it's just VISTAS, but 1B1 for high school isn't going to work. You could go back to them and say, you can use SAT and if you do PSAT, you could ask them to select that goal.
Is PSAT still required for 10th graders?
I don't know if it's required.
It used, it used to be just a couple of years ago.
But we have a, we have an issue that in three schools, 1B1 isn't going to be able to be scored. And unless they're going to change something ever, right? It doesn't seem to me like. We could ask them to do something alternative and say, another school has done this. It might be an easy alternative, but I, and then in addition, your 1B1 on the performance framework that you're looking to approve tomorrow isn't going to work.
So this isn't necessarily for Dr. Faulkner, but my thought is, I don't see many schools being super happy with just using the proficiency of their 11th graders as their entire academic outcomes. And I'm just wondering if, we don't necessar, we may not necessarily have to change anything, but I mean, really like, high school charters could, if that's what they want to do, then they can just select 1A, right? Uh, 1A1, and it's just the state, but then they know it's literally just your 11th grade proficiency. That's it. So I think many of the high schools, I would assume, are gonna pick 1B or 1A2 so that they can give us. And that way they can, I mean, I know it's going to be optional, but I, and I think for those schools who pick 1A1, I think for 1B1, it's just going to have to be NA. I mean, there's, like, I think they just don't get scored on that indicator, which is the most depressing thing I've ever seen in accountability, but.
Uh, the PEC doesn't have to accept that. You, this is your performance framework.
Well, but we do have, because 1B1 says that we will use the state, that, and that is an option for schools. And if this is what the state is doing, we, I, I actually don't feel, actually don't feel comfortable requiring additional, like, requiring charters to do additional when, when every other school doesn't have to. So if that's what they would like to do is just use their proficiency, I don't want to require, I don't feel comfortable requiring additional measures for our charters that traditional schools would, would do not have the burden of. Why? I think most of them will opt into giving us additional information because I think for most, I don't, I don't know how many, I mean, I, I, maybe there's one charter that I can think of that may be okay using just this and not worrying about growth.
There are three that, three that are doing it right now.
Right. And they picked 1B2, they picked 1B2.
Well, they picked, no, they picked 1B1.
Oh, okay.
Three schools did. So from a legal perspective, you can't apply, you can't, the indicator is not going to work because it's, I'm looking at it. 1B1 is based on student growth percentile, which you're being told can't happen. So I don't want you to have in your performance framework an option that is, that doesn't work. You should either say, not applicable and live at that, or you should say, not the school's performance on and make them say something that does give you a student growth percentile. It's unworkable right now.
I think it's just NA, like, if they pick 1B1, they're going to get scored as NA in that item.
I think this was, this isn't something that we didn't know going into the performance framework. We've had this discussion. I think if we went back and we asked schools to, to say, we need you to provide, you know, short cycle or PSAT, SAT, that's not what they contracted with us to do. So that we're, we're, we're changing the terms of what we negotiated with and I don't want to be in that place right now. If down the road, we decide that this isn't working for us, then we look at, and I don't want to reopen the performance framework and, and change it. I think if schools don't think that the state assessment, what the state is doing, and that's the SATs, and we made it clear with schools when we went into the contract negotiations, you do realize this is only your 11th graders that, that we're looking at. There are three schools that said, we're, we're really good with that. I don't think we can, I, I think we have to do it as an NA at this point.
So I, I also just want to point out that the renewal application at this point opens up the possibility for schools to provide other data, right? So, so at renewal, they could present some NWEA scores at this point.
But that would only be for that.
For renewal.
For renewal. It wouldn't be ongoing for the contract. And, um, you know, I, I think it's a game changer if we ask schools to give us, and I don't think, if I am correct in that every student doesn't have to take the SATs, that comparison becomes pretty useless. It's whoever, you know, just, you know, chose to take the PSATs in comparison to, you know, so you could be knocking out a lot of kids that took the SATs that didn't take the PSATs. So I don't think that's necessarily a useful, and I don't think it's a useful tool anyway. So, but I, I'm not comfortable in asking schools, going back to schools and saying, you know, we need, we need this.
That's fine. For tomorrow, you are making changes to your performance framework. This is wrong, so you should fix it.
Well, we're not making that change.
I actually think the only thing for 1B1, the only thing I think that needs to maybe be added is that if in the state accountability system, growth is not measured and you choose 1B1, like, it needs to be generic because this could change again in two years. It could change, so we can't be specific in the performance framework. But it, it, I think there needs to be, it might actually be in the business rules, not even in the performance framework, that if the state does not calculate growth for a school, you know, and I'm, this is only high schools, right? But also, yeah, high schools. So if it's a high school charter and this, and growth is not calculated and you choose 1B1, so like, it would be in 1B1 business rules. Your high school and you choose this, you recognize that you are following the state accountability system, which means you were, are relying 100% of your academic performance is based off of proficiency. Like, that's what you're, that's what you're basically also opting into because that's what the state accountability system does. And that's what 1B1 is. And, and I think maybe just needs that note of like, if no growth data is provided in this item by the state accountability system, this item will be scored as NA for the school.
So, so one way or the other, you should fix the business rules or fix the performance framework. You're working on these documents. You're doing it tomorrow.
We need, in the business rules, I do not think we need to change the performance framework because the performance framework says we follow the accountability system. That doesn't change. We're still following the accountability system. So in the business rule, I, I think it's literally just one little parentheses of like, if no growth, if no growth data is available for the school from the state accountability system, this item would be scored as NA. I mean, it's that simple. And then the schools, I think they'll just need in that training as they're like deciding, like, you'll need to give special attention to the high schools to make sure they recognize that they're putting all their eggs in one basket, literally, literally one basket. One grade level, one proficiency score, which for some charters, that may be fine. And they should be allowed to do that. For others, they really may not want that and they'll, they will opt into 1B2. For others, they really may not want that, and they'll, they will opt into 1B2 on their own. We're not requiring them. Because that's what I, I don't want to get into changing the performance framework to require stuff. Because once again, there's an inequity. If we require it, the traditional schools don't have to do it. I don't, that's where I, I, I'm concerned by that.
But that means you're requiring, you are requiring in the performance framework, a growth indicator. You have made a very specific section in B that all schools that are your schools are going to be assessed according to a growth indicator, except for those that say they don't want to do it.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, because that's, yeah.
Until the state accountability system changes, and then they would also then be required to. I mean, that we follow the state accountability system. We've said that, that, I mean, that's been, that is the truth for forever, probably. I mean, that's, that's option number one, we follow the state accountability system. We don't have control over that. Neither do the schools. And creating additional burden on charters because I, yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. I feel no obligation.
You have authority to do it. You can make the decision as you're saying.
I, I don't, I don't want them to test extra when they don't have to. I don't want them to do additional administrative burden when they don't have to. If they're choosing to do proficiency only, that is a high bar. Like proficiency only is an extremely high bar to attend to. Like, I mean, that is, if you're doing proficiency only, that is, that's, that is the kind of academic performance Steve wants to see. Like this high, super high level. So if they're opting into that, that to me is one of the more rigorous ways that they can opt into. It's, it like, if they have that level of proficiency, I think that's fair. But once again, the state, the state assessment or the state accountability system could change literally at any moment. So I don't want to get like super delved into this, knowing we don't have control over that part of it.
And I, the performance framework subcommittee did not have any discussion about the possibility of adding an additional burden of a requirement for the reporting of some other assessments. I'm sure the schools use other assessments, and that's fine. That's the tool that they're using for themselves with no additional accountability to any other entity for that. And we did not just, we did not negotiate with schools. This is a game changer to say, we're going to change the performance framework now in May. That schools now have to do this when we've got no input from them. This, uh, I, I can't do that at, at this point in time. Because I know we, I know we could, but I think when we're looking at our values and, you know, respecting schools, we're changing the game for schools that we, that were, we've already accepted their contracts. And now we're saying you have to do something different. And I, I'm not real comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable at all, not real comfortable, I'm not comfortable at all.
But the, uh, the second question is the performance framework isn't going, that hasn't been used by 22 schools next year. You're changing that right now. And what, what the proposal is to change is in the business rules to indicate that if it cannot be scored according to its terms, it's going to be scored not applicable. That's what you guys want in the.
Because those 22 schools that we negotiated with, we didn't negotiate that they were going to provide that additional information.
Well, you haven't negotiated with them yet. They're, they're next year. This is the performance framework to use next year. Right, but you, the new perform, you can do whatever you want. But the new performance framework says to 58 schools, we are going to look at your growth and we're going to look at your sub-targets, except if you choose 1B1, and then we're going to ignore that.
That's right, because the choice was, schools were coming to us and saying, you're not getting the really good picture of what we are. So we're giving schools the option, if they want to provide that additional information, they have the option to provide that to show a better picture. But if schools are showing, hey, we've got 80% proficiency. I don't need to look at anything else from them. I don't. So that because they're growing.
Well, and I think I'm seeing it as a different way. I'm not seeing is that, that we're, we're going to ignore, we're just ignoring that item for them. I think it's, do, are, would you like to follow the state accountability system as it, whatever the state accountability system is, or would you like additional options added to that? That's the, that's the difference. So it's not that we're, it's, we're following the state accountability system. This is what it looks like. I think delving into what the state accountability system is not, that's, that's where you're going too far for me. Like, it's like, the, the state accountability system is what it is. We don't control it, the schools don't. That's option one. Option two is would you like to be able to provide additional data? Would you like to provide additional students? Would you like to provide additional storytelling in data for your school in addition to the state accountability system? And I, so that's where I see, and, and I think looking at it as far as like, we're just going to ignore this item for you. It's not that, it's that we are following the state accountability system for that school.
I guess I see it differently. The state accountability system says incorrectly that they are, that they are calculating growth. They, because we have our experts sitting here saying, you can't do it.
Well, they are calculating growth. They're not calculating individual growth for those past years. But in high school, there's no way to do it.
Well, if you want to, if you want to, okay, it troubles me to have the state of New Mexico, who I do not control, have something that is incorrectly doing something. So, but if you're going to follow 1B1 and the state of New Mexico is saying incorrectly, we're measuring a growth score, then you should score it and you should change. You know, maybe Missy, if you pulled up 3A2, just look at 1B1. Because it should say, rather than talking about student growth percentile, which we're being told cannot happen with apple, because it's not apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. But if you are going to use the state accountability system, they, they're going to score something, right? They, they're, they give some kind of a growth score. It's just nonsensical. Because based on proficiency of kids who are not the same kids for SATs two years in a row, you should follow that then. So exceed should not be tied to student growth percentile. Not that, not, it's the performance framework document 3A2. And go down to page 10. You should change your language then, which assumes they're doing student growth percentile and doesn't. So it should say something like exceeds according to a score, I don't know what you're going to say, but it shouldn't, this doesn't match. This doesn't work. So you've got an, in, it, it's just incorrect. If you want to.
Well, it's not incorrect for middle school and elementary school, that is correct. It is only high school. And for high school, it is NA because they do not do this. But for elementary school and middle school, this is correct. Or ideally, it would be correct because they're going to calculate SGP starting next year. So this will be very much accurate for most of the schools. Which is why I'm saying, high schools only, they're the ones that, they're the only ones that even have the option to put all their eggs in one basket. But it's, it's because of the state accountability system, not because of ours. But all of elementary and middle school will have this, and that is correct.
That's why the business rules just.
They, that if a high school.
The notation that if you're a high school.
Or actually, you shouldn't even say that. It should say, if this, if, if this is, if this is a school that is not calculated by the state accountability system, then this score, this would be scored as NA. And that way it's like.
1, 1B1, 1B1 is going to have to say, if the state does not provide this data.
Then the school will be scored NA in this item.
If the school is scored NA.
But technically, so let me just double check. When we look at the new vistas, technically, there is going to be, but it's, it's not SGP. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, yeah.
There will be growth, but that won't follow that. That, that's where this is not, it can't be applicable to 22, 23, because this is based off SGP.
So when you look up at the, the rollup and whatever it is that if you, you know, you, then if you have uh, all exceeds, this is just not counted because it's NA. So it doesn't really affect anything else about how.
Yeah, it doesn't actually hurt them or harm them or, or, or benefit them. The only, but that's why a school, I think many high schools, I believe many high schools will opt into 1B2 because having proficiency only is, is a very challenging bar to hit. So I think most high schools will opt into 1B2 where they are going to provide their NWA data or they're going to say, you know what, we are going to test all of our 10th graders in PSAT, and we're going to do the growth on, and we'll provide that to you guys. I think that's what most high.
Or in a more jaded way, sorry to be jaded. If I have, if I do, if I am not growing my Hispanic students, but I've got a lot of proficient kids, I'm going to choose that because I'm going to go on proficiency and you guys aren't going to look at it. So you are, for that school who says, you know, we really performed terribly on this one subgroup, so we can get away with that.
Can you go up to 1A1? I mean, th, this is the thing, I don't think there's going to be a school that is doing proficiency only, choosing 1A1, that's going to end up in that percentile if they're not serving.
51%, so they can fail, I'm just being negative here. Forty-nine percent of the kids.
That is not what that percentile is. It's their, that's the percentile based off of every other school in the state. It is not based off their students and their individual students. It is them compared to every other, so they are serving their students at.
Forty-nine, forty-nine percent of the students.
Nope, it's not.
Forty-nine percent of the school, other schools do better. I still meet because I got 51%.
Yes.
I'm failing my.
Only, you're not, they're not going to get that if they're failing a ton of kids in their school. They're just not, because it's proficiency only. That's, that's.
You know, I just feel like it's really, I, I feel like you're creating a carve out that is inconsistent with, with what you've been trying to do. It's up to you. You've been, I, you've got the discretion to do it.
Proficiency only is the highest bar for accountability that we could possibly put on a school. It's proficiency only.
You could be just above, you could be 51%. So I'm not a great school at 51%. Forty-nine percent of other schools are doing better than I am. I can choose 1A1 because I know I'm going to squeak by, and you're never going to check in high school my, my subgroups.
But I think contract negotiations this year alone showed us that schools are preferring to take the option two. And it's that, it's those very few schools that we don't have a concern about anyway that, um, that are, that are choosing because they are, they're scoring hu, really high in their proficiency to start with. So they're very comfortable, they're not that marginal, oh, I might, I might, I might meet the 51%. You know, schools that are on that cusp, they're not taking that risk that I'm going to put all my eggs in the basket on, on that, on the SATs for that. Schools chose to do the, the alternate route. So I think it's, you know, I, I'd be really surprised with the large group of schools that we have coming through this year, that there'll be many that'll stick just with, with this. I don't think we're, I don't think we're opening the door for someone to game the system. I don't.
Okay, so we're adding a sentence to the business rules for 1B1 that says, if the state accountability system does not provide a student growth percentile.
It'll be scored NA.
I think that leaves it to where we're not beholden to the changes that could happen. And the school, if it does change, then the school also has to change, right? So like, let's say in two years, they're like, you know what, actually, we really do need to do this. And they require everyone to do PSAT, and they start doing student percentile growth. We don't have to go back and change the contract, we don't have to go back and change anything. The school is now held that bar as it changes without us having to even do anything.
Right, and, and what hasn't been happening as consistently, I guess, is that the 90-day plans, which does ask schools, especially, I think, PEC has traditionally cared about those with designations to be doing the short cycle assessments and to be reflecting on student performance with those. So I think a lot of schools do. Um, and the schools that have designations are going to be more accountable to those 90-day plans moving forward than what they have been. And so they're.
We've got zero schools that have designation.
So that, that's a great.
But that, but that's not in the, that's not in the performance framework. That, that would be PED and relying on PAE, which this commission can agree to do. And then they are going to have, I'm just looking, so the tier one, two, three, and four, you have to meet or exceed all performance indicators in the framework, on track for renewal. You have to meet or exceed all performance indicators, so you're going to do 1A1. And you can meet or exceed. And then the only other indicator that's going to be valid is, I guess your participation rate. You must have, so you're going to have to, there's only 1A1 and 1AC, and 1C.
We actually have someone that's on, wants to, uh, put you in on this. Karen Warner is, is here with like, so.
You have permission to talk, Karen?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Gibson, commissioners. I just had a question because I'm not sure I understand. I know that the PEC has always been very concerned about subgroup performance. And I know that the growth has always been a challenge because of the statistically unreliable data. Frankly, we've been told by accountability in the past because of our numbers being so low. So my question really is about, I think you're right that, that, you know, an NA is fine for those groups. But what about the schools who picked 1B2? Because it's still an, or, so they're still could do the NA? I'm a little confused. I think that there may be a disadvantage, and I could be wrong, but there may be a disadvantage to those who selected 1B2 or not. Guess the or would take care of it? Like, I guess you're, you're saying that schools that don't have the data, high schools, I guess, is what we're talking about. They don't have the data, so they're going to be NA on providing performance on their subgroup growth. Um, Commissioner Burt, I, I respect many of the things you've said tonight, but I do want to push back a little bit on, I disagree that, uh, I do think we have schools that have high achievers and would be very successful overall, but may or may not be serving their special ed or EL or other groups appropriately. So I'm concerned about an NA in that then there's no growth data at all? Is that what I'm understanding? And then if I, if a school chose 1B2, are they then required to provide growth data? Or are they able to use the NA as well if you're a high school?
Oh, so my under, so if you're the high school and you've chosen 1B2, you would have to provide that growth data because it's not available through. Because it's not available through the state accountability system. Because this language covers K through 12 or 1 through 12. So it, it's not an or because we've said that schools that. If you're a grade five school, you could, a student can ring the bell from the state accountability system. Or their individual growth data.
Yeah, so what I'm seeing then is a disadvantage to schools who elected to do 1B2. And I think the advantage to 1B2 is that it does address growth, right? Like it's growth of students within your school year. The reason I think this.
Right. I, I think I missed, I, I missed that. If there's a dis, are you saying there's a disadvantage because those schools are going to have to provide that? Well. That's true.
Yes.
But that's the choice they've made.
Well, and I, and I think this is where, where in my brain, it, I mean, obviously it could be a disadvantage if they're not. If they're performing poorly, but I'm assuming the schools that are opting into this are gonna want to show their growth data. Because in 1A1, it's going to be proficiency only, right? They, they get proficiency only in 1A of 11th graders. And I think there's going to be many schools who do not want us to look at only. The proficiency of just 11th graders. And so I think the schools that are opting into 1B2 are schools that are wanting to show. Like, yeah, our proficiency may be low up here, but look at our growth down here. So I don't think they're gonna, I mean, if they have bad growth. Yeah, they're gonna like get a working to meet or, or they could be rated low on that. But I think the schools that are opting into this are wanting to show that additional part of their story outside of just proficiency only. Which is what 1A is going to be about for high schools, is going to be proficiency only. Um, and so I, like, and actually that's going to be, even if they pick 1A2, it's still proficiency only. They, we're not, the, we're still not calculating growth up there if they're not doing it. In the state accountability system, so 1B2 is really to allow schools to show the growth data where they would not have an opportunity to otherwise. But if they want to take NAs on that, I do, once again, I, I think there's a, a balance of. Requiring our charter schools to do something that traditional schools do not have to. And I don't, I think that there's, I'm just trying to find the balance in there. And I think the performance framework is a lot about opportunities. To show other parts of the school that have not been available previously, but not requiring it. And so trying to have a balance there.
You, you, you do allow still. A school to choose 1A2 and 1B1. So if I'm a high school, I can say I want to show my kids or my, my students are proficient two ways. And I want it to be not applicable because I'm going to choose 1B1.
It's fine, it's still, even if they show, if they show proficiency on the SAT then and on NWA. And they have high proficiency on them, that's still a high bar. That is the highest bar. And they're putting all their eggs in proficiency, that's, that is very, very few schools that will ever like want to do that. I mean, I, I've traveled around the states talking to schools about who wants to. Get more points in proficiency. It is, it was one school district that wanted it. And it's very few schools in between that want proficiency to be rated above everything else. It's so few because it's extremely difficult. And I do understand the idea of looking at the student groups and seeing inequities. Because that's what the idea behind it was. I think we're still going to see that in the proficiency as well. We're gonna get proficiency subgroups and we're gonna see like, oh. Ninety percent of this subgroup is proficient, but only seventy percent of this subgroup is proficient. We're still going to see subgroup data, it's just going to be proficiency only. Which is, which is, yeah, and we'll see subgroup data for graduation rates, right? So we're going to be able to look at equity still in those numbers. But man, for it to be proficiency only is a, that is a very high bar. Most teachers won't, don't want you to look at just proficiency only either. Um, so I, that's where I see, like, I think we can still do the equity work in the accountability. I think it's limiting those high schools. If they're going to do proficiency only and get an NA on 1B1. That's their, their, they're actually setting an extremely high bar for themselves.
And may I comment again, it's hard virtually to know if I can jump it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Burt, um, I agree. The high performing schools are going to choose just like, you know, I represent Explore, we're fine either way. But I'm just looking at this from the work that I've done in the past with reviewing subgrowth data and the issues we have with this. And some schools opted for 1B2. Because they know that this, the, the, that the state accountability growth is flawed. And doesn't, isn't statistically reliable, we've been told that. And so meeting a sixty SGP on the state accountability as it's written in 1B2. Is not going to happen because they're also using end of year to end of year, which isn't even the same students. So yes, we opted, we, schools may have opted for 1B2. Because they want to be able to show you how the growth has occurred during the school year with one set of students. I'm just not sure what the implication is. I, I agree proficiency is a very high bar, but if you had a school that was majority high achievers. And had a smaller group of special ed and EL. By the state accountability system, you're going to meet the mark. But that's not addressing the subgroup performance and how they're handling. The areas that charter schools have traditionally not served, which is special ed and EL. So I'm, I'm just overall concerned with the impact of. The intent of seeing subgroup. Data and being sure that schools are addressing growth for all students seems to be. Missing, um, because it's not going to be in the state accountability system. And then I have one more question, so schools that are considered a high school. But they serve K to 12. How does that work? They will still have growth for 1B1 for the grades that are not high school grades? Or are they going to be excluded from that because they serve high school like they are in other accountability reports?
Seems like if the data is available, then it will be reported.
Well.
Every grade.
I don't.
Every grade will be reported with the information that we have. We're not, if you're a K through 12 school, we're not saying that. We're just only looking at what is on the state accountability system for 12th, for high school.
Yeah, but do we know if the state accountability system is going to show growth for K through eight in their accountability report? For a K to 12.
That's what you found, right?
It's the, so the state account, if you're a K through 12 school. The state accountability system, vistas, whatever you want to call it, is going to show. K through 12, not just, oh, this is the SATs, you know, the, the grade 12. The full complement of the school is going to be accounted for in the state accountability system.
That's correct.
So it should say, if the state accountability system does not calculate a student growth. Percentile. For any of the students in the school, the item will be scored not applicable. If, no, not for any of the students.
Are you, are you referencing 1B2?
Yeah, well, 1B1, 1B1. So, but, but that's what Karen's question is, okay, if I'm a K through 12. It will be scored because I have four, four or five grades that there are student growth percentages. So, and so it, it does need to say, it's only not applicable. It's only not applicable. If student growth percentage.
Right, we don't want to say just for high schools in the business rules because that could change. So it's if.
Karina, say what you said again.
Okay. And I do want to read, I, we are not leaving out subgroups. From these schools who are opting into 1A1 and 1B1, and then they get an NA on B, 1B1. We are still going to be looking at subgroups in every indicator. So once again, there, once again, the school is essentially opting into, you're going to look at, at proficiency. Across, across student groups and we can still send letters of concern, we can still take action. As the PEC, if we see that there are certain groups at the school who are. Are proficient and then there are certain groups that are significantly lower and to, to a level that's inappropriate. But I mean, when, when you are looking at proficiency with students with disabilities. It's going to be very difficult, like there's going to be an imbalance in proficiency there. Um, but we're, we're looking at student groups throughout that school. But once again, the school is saying, we're going to, we're going to let you look at proficiency only.
Can we look, I don't think that you are, I mean, I'm looking at the business rules and, and you're not.
The 1A1 is the state accountability system, which breaks down proficiency by subgroup.
Subgroup.
Correct.
Dr. Faulkner?
That's what's on.
But 1, 1A1 business rules, the state, I'm reading it, the school's overall performance on the state accountability system. As compared to other schools, you're not looking, you're not looking past that in your business rule.
It is, I, I'm looking at it right here on, for Explore, I see it all broken down by demographics. Their proficiency by demographics. It's all, they, the state already does that right now today, they've always done that. We all have access to this information and it is part of their overall score. So like, right now I see for, which I shouldn't say this like, oh, because it may be old data now and could be changing on Monday. But for example, Explore, I pulled it up, their math proficiency is forty-five percent overall. But I can look at their overall, there's white, black, Hispanic, Asian, and, and American Indian, economically disadvantaged students with disabilities, English language learners. I can see what the proficiency rates are of all of their student groups. And we could take action based off of that, which the school is basically saying like, yeah, we're willing to let you. By not providing you any additional information, by not opting into 1A2, 1B2. They're saying, yeah, go ahead and just look at that and, and we can take action based off of that.
I'm not positive you can take that action based off of that.
Why would we not?
So, okay, so if I'm a lawyer for a charter school and I've chosen 1A1 and I've chosen 1B1 and I'm a high school. And I have great scores and I exceed. But the data on Vista shows, um. For Hispanic subgroup. You have that in your business rules right now, if you make this change, that that's not applicable. So it's not applicable, so you can't apply it.
In 1A1, 1A1 is.
No, 1A1, they exceed, so how are you?
They can exceed, but we still, they get an overall exceeds, but then we can still say we have a concern with your Hispanic subgroup performance.
And how are you going to, I, I'm just.
Which is what we just sent out in the letters. We still broke, they could have gotten an exceptional overall, but they, we can still have concerns underneath.
Okay, but you're saying that. You're saying in one party for performance framework, it's not applicable. You are saying in your business.
That growth is not applicable, but your proficiency rates are.
And so, so if I, if my growth rates of Hispanic students are really poor.
There's no growth rates at all, we're just looking at proficiency.
So, oh, so you're saying that if the proficiency rates of Hispanic students, you can identify that.
Yes.
But you can't identify anything, I think if you make 1B1 inapplicable, it's inapplicable.
It is, that's what I'm saying, and 1A1 is where we take action. 1A1, we're looking at their proficiency in the state accountability system. And we can see, I can see right here. Like the state does, does break it down by demographics and you can see the bar where it's like, which groups are proficient compared to other groups in that school. So we're still, we still can be very much equity based, like, we shouldn't.
On proficiency, but I think with what you're doing today, you've eliminated growth. And even if there's some data that you later get somewhere that says. Their growth is horrible. You, you've written yourself out.
Well, we're not going to see that their growth is horrible because it's not calculated. We will, no one will ever see that, there is no growth, we cannot see that their growth is horrible, we will never know that.
It's data that's not there, it's just not there.
Accountability system changed completely. We're never going to see that growth providing that. It's, it's just not there.
Well, and, but. Karen's point is if a different school has opted in to 1B2. And chosen to have you see their growth data, they could get dinged for something that another school. Didn't get dinged.
It's their choice.
But, but I, 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 I just, I guess I take umbrage with they get dinged though, Julia? Because they made that choice based on what they know about their school, all of this is very public. They decided on that.
And, and you don't know that they got dinged.
At all.
At all. Know that they got dinged on growth versus another school. Because that other school opted for 1A1 and doesn't have any growth, so you won't know that. That won't be there because they're only testing the 11th graders. There, there's no comparison there, there's no comparison.
It's the same thing in a way, is saying, you know, this school's showing their mission by doing a survey. And people saying, oh, that survey, you know, but then another school is saying, no, I'm going to do this other assessment, whatever it is. You know, okay, so maybe this school didn't do well for that mission. It's like, well, but if I had done that, I would have been okay. It was their choice to do, to do this. I don't want to say more rigorous, but, but it's, right.
It's allowing them to show growth in a way that we could not see it any other way, which is what. I know coming onto the commission was the biggest complaint I heard from schools is. I can, you guys don't see the whole story, you only see the proficiency rates, you only see, I want to show you more. This is, that 1B2 is the opportunity for them to do that so that we're not, the other option we have. The only other option we have is just to look at proficiency for every one of our schools. That's, that's the difference, like if, if, if we take away this option, that's all we get to look at. We're providing more options for schools, like we are providing additional options. And so to say that be by providing additional options, we're making it, we're going to ding schools for, no. Like we're providing an additional option that's not there if we did not do that. It would be awful, I actually, this is, this is why we wanted to update the performance framework. It's exactly why, because we didn't want to go based off of the state accountability system alone. It, for this exact reason. Because if we didn't have option 1B2. They would be, we would, we would not be able to do growth in any way for any high school at all. And we have a lot of schools that show better growth than they do proficiency. And I want them to have the opportunity to show us that.
I mean, this is time and time again, when schools were coming up for renewal, it was like, this isn't who we are. This, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't show you anything about how we're growing our, our kids. And that's, you know, that's why. In the old performance framework, mission goals were, because. The commission at that time just proficiency and. We struggled, so I, this is, you know, this is part of that charter deal. You make the contract, you make the choice. And you live with the benefits of the consequences of whatever that choice is. Commissioner Korea?
Okay, so I think it's time, after this spirited discussion, what's your fix? What exactly do you want right now at 12:30?
We did it, we fixed the business rule.
Well, then there you go, so why is this even being discussed anymore?
Because we're worried, we're worried we're making the right decision or not.
Okay, but I mean, I've, I, no, I've been taking it all in and there is a point at which sometimes. There's a lot of repetition, a lot of people talking over one another, a lot of redundancies, and it's time to move on. So is it time to move on? Yes, I think so. And I think we're in the middle of a presentation. You're done? All right then, you know what that means? What? You're just trying to do the right thing? I understand that.
Thank you for indulging us. We do appreciate it, thank you, thank you. And I want to say once again, um, welcome, because I think what you're adding. In terms of helping our work is, you know, is being seen early and we're, I'm looking forward to, to more. our work is, you know, is being seen early and I'm looking forward to more. Thank you. So we're done with three. Yep. Two, sorry. We still have to go on to three, but want to take a lunch break? 1:30, yeah, that's good. So we are back on to item number three, but we have, we finished the transition text checklist, memo on statutory requirements and timing options. Well, we covered that with, yes, we, yes. I thought that, I was thinking that was something different. Contract, no changes.
Uh, yes, we're on the E.
Right. List of annual compliance requirements, indicator 3C.
There's just one change. In working through this with CSD, we included the bullying policy as one of the keys to look at and we took out one of, do you remember, Karina, which one we took out? I can look at last month. Uh, we just felt like that you get so many reports on bullying.
Bullying, yeah.
That that is kind of key to make sure that they have that, that bullying policy in place, but we switched it out. Otherwise, that document is the same as last month. I'll find the exact thing that we switched out.
The assurance document.
Oh, the assurance document is unchanged. The assurance document, there are two times it's going to be used with a supplemental page. One is for the New Mexico School for the Arts for their statutory requirements. The second one is for the transition year checklist, so we will approve that supplementary page next month when you finalize the transition year checklist. So we'll know exactly what goes on that supplementary page. Otherwise, it's the same.
Okay. A new application timeline. I think we really only asked for this to be made available so that everyone involved in the application process could get their eyes on this. But I did have, I thought I had a question. I just want to look once again at our tentative timing. So we're looking at, because I was thinking about, I had to make reservations. So we're going to be at Grants on the morning of 7/8 or the after.
In, in the afternoon.
We're going to be at Grants in the afternoon.
Right.
And then we're going to be.
In Albuquerque for two schools. Do you want me to share?
Uh, we're on F, 3F. 3F, yeah, yep. So we're, so we're in Grants on the afternoon, then we're in Albuquerque for two schools at one of those two places. And then on the 10th, we're in Santa Fe.
In the morning and then in the afternoon.
We're driving to Alamogordo.
And then, yeah, because, and we'll probably have to spend the night in Alamogordo the night of the 10th, so that in the morning, we do the hearing there. And then, this is assuming that all the schools that are currently in are going to submit, which history tells us that a lot of times they don't.
Right. You know, the only thing, and I know you have no control over this, absolutely none, but as best we can messaging these people, because, you know, Consuelo's going to put in a substantial amount of time trying to arrange for these meeting places. And there's, there's, I don't think people fully grasp what it takes to get ready for these meetings, including all of us having to travel and take time off work potentially and, and do all of that, that, you know, it happened last year that it was the night before. We ended up with a day before we were going to, and even the Portales people didn't know we were going to Portales. So that was, that's a whole different story. But, you know, for schools to truly, applicants to truly understand what it takes so that the disruption, if, if they decide the night before.
Well, they didn't.
I want to hold them accountable.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. And just, and you know the calls that you asked Missy and I to make to give them feedback on the NOI? One of the things I said to every one of the candidates was, look, when the time comes, if you're not ready or, you know, as you're working on this and you're not feeling like you're ready, there's no shame in saying, we're not ready, we'll wait another year, keep working on it. So that was communicated with them, but I think what I hear you saying is that it would be great to have, because the last NOI training occurred on April 22nd, but maybe, Missy, we need to schedule one more and we would just like review this schedule and give them the extra, this is what it's going to look like and, you know, we're arranging our travel around this. And so the minute you decide that you might not want to continue, let us know ASAP. And then I think I'll be working closely, of course, with Consuelo, who is going to work with the venues. And so I don't know, maybe we would communicate with them right now, this is the exact day, but find out about the day before, the day after and see if we need to reshuffle our schedule.
Because if a school, if an applicant, if it was possible, if an applicant said, oh, I'm not going to do it, we might be able to alter the schedule. And I get it, a lot of school, a lot of applicants don't really, don't have a clear idea until they get the.
Capacity interview?
Noticed in the agenda.
No, no, no. The.
Oh, the preliminary.
The preliminary, yeah. That, that, once they get that, the capacity interview, when they get the feedback from the capacity interview, I think some schools start to get that different level of discomfort, applicant, get that, you know, and there's no, there shouldn't be any, you're right, there shouldn't be any shame in saying, you know what, we're going to take this feedback and we're going to work to make this a better application for the following round. I am, it, it's kind of disappointing that most of the time that doesn't happen. They just go away. We don't have schools come back and say, and I, and I also get that. It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
So for, to ask people to do it one more year, it's asking a lot, but it's, it's hard. But for, you know, for schools to hang in there and then, you know, then it's just, and it's our frustration, so I guess we have to deal with it.
Sharon Gibson, last year, when the school was surprised that it was in the district that they named, it's because they had, they were assuming that the address that somebody lived was the one that would host the, that the school was going to be physically located.
Okay, all right. So we're good with, with that, hopefully with that timeline.
Can I ask a quick question? 2 o'clock at Grants, why, everybody's going to drive back to Albuquerque, right? I would assume?
I mean, that's Monday, so you'll be able to drive Monday morning-ish, depending on where you're coming from, to Grants.
And these are two-hour meetings usually?
Um, we'll have to look at the agenda.
Close, yeah, at least.
Well, as.
People get back to Albuquerque around 5:00.
We'll take a look at the agendas, Commissioner Beck, and see if you guys want to continue. And I, I think one of the thing that informs that is how much community input do you want to listen to and account for?
Well, I don't think we have, we don't have the ability to tell people they can't speak.
Right.
I mean, that's the purpose of this meeting, is to hear from the community. So I would, I would be very reluctant to say, no, sorry, time's up, we're, we're done. But it does, it, that time allows for folks like me not to have to come in the night before. You know, that I can drive in that morning because it's actually further in here, to me and Grants.
I'd, I'd like some clarification, though, on what you want me to do. You want me to reach out to these schools and see if they're actually, because I feel uncomfortable doing that.
No, not at this point in time, no. But.
I tell them throughout that it's okay to, to not.
Missy, my question for you is, did they see the schedule of?
Yeah, I think they should be.
I can email them the schedule.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good.
The only thing about sending it out early is then they plan their vacations around it, they provide the community input around it, they start telling parents.
That's why I think a meeting would be good and I'll, even if it's like half an hour in the evening or whatever, I'd be happy.
Before or after June 3rd?
14 days away?
Before.
From finding out?
Yeah.
It just doesn't.
I think we should do it after.
You're saying the community input, yeah.
Yeah, June 1st, just reach out.
Well, that's a Saturday, so I'm thinking, right. And there's still the opportunity for them to submit an application, but not do it all correctly and then invalidate themselves.
Yes.
I'd be weary of sending this out because I feel like it messes with people too much.
I don't care what, I think they should have it, to me, as early as possible, that's, that they know this is the, this is the tentative timeframe and that schools shouldn't be saying, oh, I can't do, I get the community input part, that they're, that they're gathering, but I think if you're gathering for the 8th and it possibly changes to the 9th and it's early enough, I don't think we can change it the night before. That I don't think we can do. If someone drops out on the 8th, we can't move everyone else up to the, to the 8th and say, sorry, we're doing this on the, on the 8th, because that's not fair. But I think we had already sent the message to schools that this is the week of community input, so don't be scheduling something really specific because you don't know what day, at this point in time, you don't know what day of that week you're going to be until we know for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So are we on to the renewal? Oh.
These are, these are the dates for the community input hearings, when we go for the new applicants to hear from their community.
And it will be publicly noted, noticed and an agenda published like your regular meetings? It's just that it will say that it's in these various locations.
And that there's no action being taken at that meeting. We ask questions, but we don't make any indication to the applicant as to how we would vote.
Yeah.
So it's just, we do that in August, at our August meeting. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
So it stays, if, if it stays, if, if we get a Santa Fe application and we stick with this schedule.
And Sharon, if someone cannot come to the community input hearing, it's transcribed, it's provided to you. The statute requires that it be provided to you to be able to review it. It actually doesn't require that you read it, but we assume that you do. So if you miss it, you, the transcription is there.
We also do this as a Zoom, right? So commissioners can contribute, participate remotely? Is that what we did last year?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
What do we call zooming in Portales?
Well, you were there in person, but did anybody zoom in?
Well, we allow people to do public comment, so that we do allow people to, for the community input, people do, do public comment.
And Cindy's there remotely.
Cindy, well, Cindy actually came to Portales because she was afraid she wouldn't be able to hear because.
Santa Fe audio visual, follow us.
Yes, yeah.
Well, we're looking at the possibility, if the venue is like at a, no, at a community college where they're already set up and I had, I've already offered that I will gladly go to Alamogordo and double check and make sure that it's, that it's okay. We do have them if we need them, but if the facility is already set up, we're going, we will be okay, but people are going and checking. They are not relying on the facility to say, we're good. Oh, no, yeah. No, and that's why I said, I'll gladly go to Alamogordo and double check. Yeah, no, it's not going to, no, no.
Yeah, both of these documents now have when the, when the school needs to provide their choice options. So that's in 3F and, and 3F1, so those are both listed.
So this note here says, the application says November 10th, which is a Sunday?
Um, would you like for me to walk through the renewal process and timeline? I think Commissioner Beck asked for it last time. Happy to screen share.
Do we say thanks now?
Okay, so this.
We're good, we're good.
Well, I did, I did want to talk about it because I think it's really important that we're clear that we are, we have two parallel processes happening at the same time. This has already been shared with the Charter Schools Division staff who alerted me to the challenges associated, associated with the annual reports. Probably we'll have to invoke the rule portion that says if you don't have a complete annual report, you, you, you get a partial, because not all data is going to be available in time for the August 1, right? Of course not.
Right.
So we'll do the best we can, working within the system that we have, but anyway, that's it. And the other thing I wanted just to note is that because the application says the 10th, and that's a Sunday, we moved it up to Friday, the 8th, and because the application says December 1st, we moved it forward to Monday, which is December 2nd.
I might be done, but I may not be.
That is document 3F2, or sorry, 3F1.
The application says November 10th for the PEC letter. Why did it say, why did it say a date?
No, that's the, okay, so I'm going to screen share again.
So that letter is the letter that resulted from the, and that October 9th PEC work session is a Zoom work session, because that's that meeting that we have if there's anything that we want to get additional information on. So that that letter that's noted there for November 8th is as a result of that, October 9th. So do we have 30 days?
The 8th. Yeah, the 8th.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, we're good. We are on to G.
I believe there are no changes from last month on any of the items in G. G125, they're all the same as last month. If you have comments, happy to discuss them.
H?
The conflict of interest document. I have emailed it over to PSFA. I have not heard back from them. I'll follow up with them. If they are interested, which obviously they do not have to do, in adding similar questions that we want to their form, that would be great. But we could also use their form and then do a short supplement.
Okay. Item number four.
There had been a request to outline for you the data, the ability to use data in the last year of a charter, which obviously for us is the fifth year, or if it's a three-year term, the third year. So the law allows you to review the data provided by the charter school to support ongoing evaluation of the charter school contract during the term of the contract. So I think that it's limited to the five years unless you, unless you put it somehow in an agreement with the school itself. However, you've done that quite a few times. So the, there's a couple of things that you already look back. Graduation date is a year behind, audit date is a year behind, this is a year behind. So quite a bit of your data already is from the last year of the contract and that, and that's already accepted. You have also negotiated with quite a few schools to use that data when you wanted to. So several schools are coming in front of you in June that are starting a new contract July 1, and they're providing you with baseline data. On the three-year term that should be approved tomorrow, you expressly indicated that you were going to use data from the last year of their contract. But there is not any authority in statute or rule to do it otherwise. However, as far as I know, every time you had a reason to ask a school to use their data for baseline data, they agreed to it. I have checked with two, two other authorizers and then in the process of trying to reach the third, they both, the two schools, the two authorizers that I've talked to have the same exact issue that we do. They can, they have, they approve in the fall of the fifth year, so they have limited data. And they do not go back into the previous term unless it's in their charter contract. The difference, in particular in, in Washington DC, is they have a 15-year contract. But this impacts you every five years. It impacts them once every 15 years. And they are able, they do two high-stakes decision views at year five and year 10, but it's in the middle of their contract term, so they can use whatever data. So they are in exactly the same situation that we are in. Minnesota is in exactly the same situation that we are in. But the woman made a really, she made a really good point to me. A performance framework is your performance during the term of the charter. You are assessing them on their performance during that term. So she says that's why they don't look back. Is you would be looking back to performance in a previous charter. So so far, they are all in exactly the situation that we are in. But I don't really see it holding you back. The one other issue that we were going to discuss on this is whether you would want CSD to do any type of an, an assessment at the end of the fifth year of a charter. CSD personally doesn't do that because they do an extensive renewal site visit. Do you want them to do that or not? I don't know if Director Travas wants to add anything to that. The only time that you presently are using that, you're negotiating with the schools and getting the baseline data themselves.
Yeah, I would say, the only thing that I would hope we can do is when we're looking at growth, which captures from year to year or improvement in, say, financial performance in terms of repeat audit findings from year to year, that that last year in the charter contract or charter, previous charter term isn't completely off limits. And I think that I also, I'm not sure how you all want to handle some of the other indicators that would typically be captured. We don't do an annual report for the final year because we do the renewal visit. But it's so early in the school year that there's a lot of things that are not final, right? So I'm not looking for necessarily an additional report that you look at and that we generate. I just think this notion of, you know, the, the second semester especially of your final year of a charter contract should matter.
So by and large, the financial concern kind of gets, because we generally, if it was a serious enough concern, we put a condition on. So we do, we do in a way look at it because we're looking at then the next audit and comparison. Did they clear out those audit findings? So that's kind of, so I'm wondering if it would be better to, instead of just asking the schools, hey, would you do this? If it, because these are schools that we have a, a serious concern about. I don't want to just randomly be looking, I don't think at every school. But is this something that maybe we need to start thinking about? Conditions and a condition being that the, that we're going to look at their end-of-the-year short cycle or something like that. And that it's cemented in, not just as a, please. But I know there's some schools attorneys that don't think we have the ability to place conditions. But most schools don't, they don't because the alternative.
Well, I, I think that's settled now that you have an ability to place conditions on schools. The more recent concern was a condition on a school that you didn't yet authorize. So that's different. And the condition on a school, the way that you're, the way that you are approaching it right now is you are identifying it as unsatisfactory performance, which means that that first year of their charter, they either fix it or it, or it's uncorrected unsatisfactory performance. You're just speeding it up a year. So I, I'm not concerned about, I, I feel like your processes are working okay. Grad, you've got several data points that are delayed anyway.
They're not going to get the letter from the annual report because they've got the renewal.
Yeah, the condition document essentially acts as a.
As that.
As that.
Right, right.
Do we have the ability, if there were, if, I'm being very hypothetical, like if there were to be the case in which the, the commission is considering a shorter term, is there any opportunity to write into that particular renewal that we would be able to use year five data into the next term? So that we.
You did, you.
Four years of data? If that were to ever.
Yeah, you, well, you did it. And you're going to vote on that contract tomorrow. And you're using this year's data as baseline data. You wouldn't be assessing four years of data, but you can use that as baseline to see if they have improved. And in order to make your decision be more reasoned on that. So because you're not going to get that last year of data, so yes. Are you able to say the fifth year of your charter, I'm revoking you on that ground or not renewing you on that ground? No, but a baseline, yes. That's how you would use it anyway. So I don't even see that you're limiting yourself. You want context, which you will get.
Are we good to move on?
I'm good.
Alrighty. PED rule, healthy universal school meals and possible comment to PED.
Okay, the food subcommittee had some issues with trying to get together. But we all, no, we all had issues with it. But we did look through it. And I asked Karina, which Consuelo did, thank you, to give everybody a hard copy of the rule. And I'm going to go through real quickly what we're concerned with. Because we've talked about it, not in the official subcommittee meeting. And we look at page two halfway down. The compliance with performance measures for certification. That's where we really are concerned for a few reasons. B1, no less than 50%, no, no less than 50% of reimbursable national school lunch program and school breakfast programs shall be freshly prepared meals at an onsite kitchen. That's a challenge, okay? Bigger challenge is 3A. No less than 50% of the schools in a school food authority shall grow food on campus with seasonal incorporation of food into breakfast, lunch and snack programs. If you look back at page one, which Commissioner Burt pointed out, defines school food authority, which is charter schools. So I don't know if that means all charter schools or the individual charter school. Okay. If it's, okay.
Wait, 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 okay. Slow down and say the page number because I think that one of the things we need to be super clear about is the difference between a food authority and a, and the certification.
We're talking about the food authority, which is technically a charter school is a.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in 3A.
It says on 3A that if it's a single school, is its own food authority, so it's every state charter, they all have to grow food on campus now.
Okay, so or they contract with.
So many schools that they are in a strip mall or they're in an area that's a lot of concrete and.
No.
No, it's just, where I am, I'm serious. Who did this?
How many, how many pesticides I can.
I mean, I think the, I, I'm sorry.
Who did this? Well, is it safe and healthy? Is it the people at the end of this hall right here on the left?
Yeah. There's policy people, yeah.
People that have never been to a charter that.
They actually, they did, they actually, they, they did community input hearings around the state regarding this. They did. I, I was unable to go to the one that was closest to me. So I, I don't know how well they were attended. I don't know whether, I'm imagining that the public didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it. And maybe even schools didn't think this was what was going to come out of it. So, yeah.
Are they going to fund this if somebody wants to build a greenhouse?
So yes, there is money.
Yeah, there is money.
They do have money. And they set aside a lot of money for charter schools specifically. So there technically is some money attached that is available to do this.
I mean, I understand the spirit of healthy. I mean, I do. I do. I understand that spirit that you want kids to be eating things that are healthy. But once again, you know, if, unless you're controlling how it's being grown and so on, it could be riddled with as many pesticide, more pesticides than what's in my grocery store. But at least I know where I can get rid of the lettuce that's in my yard.
9.2, but I think that, yeah, I think also, just the, like, it's very vague in terms of like, does every child get a shred of lettuce? You know, at, at NACA, they have a greenhouse. The chances are they can't even, they don't, they don't grow enough there to like even get a shred of lettuce in every child's mouth every day. And that's only 450 kids.
Yeah.
So like places like Red River, right?
Yeah.
Our Roots and Wings, schools like that, that's feasible. Dream Dine would be at feasibility. But then when you get to like Rio Rancho or Albuquerque Public Schools, like, how many heads of lettuce you go through a day? Thousands.
I don't even think J. Paul Taylor's down by me. They have a little plot of land that they, that they use. And my essence does too. But the, but it's the, it's the learning of, in the growing process.
Right.
Yeah, and maybe a little sampling of what you're getting. But the notion that, I mean, I think HoSho does a, does a pretty decent job because they've made it, part of their goal is to be able to provide that fresh and local. And they realize they have to do it themselves. But they also have the space to be able to do it. And many of our schools, it's like, you know, who's going to, who's going to buy the land for them? And the equipment and the knowledge and the staffing to, to do this. So I know, I'm pretty sure it's been subject of a number of calls. So if you want to provide all the happy notes that you have.
Well, you all have raised all of the points that the charter leaders are concerned about. So thank you for that and confirming that and affirming that, that they do not have the resources, the space, the time. My son goes to J. Paul and I think he brought a salad home for the entire year that was produced from the garden. And the other concern is B4, B and C, that you have the shared table. So shared tables should provide, be provided for food services, students, parents, and return unopened allowable food daily at most exit points in the cafeteria. So if you're collecting unused, where are they supposed to store it for a month? And how do you, and also on B and C, schools shall have a system for monthly donation of unused foods to students or community-based organizations. How are they going to know who to distribute it to? Again, where do you house it for a month at a charter school with food that's unused? There, there are a lot of issues.
And 5B, when you're, when you are the school food authority, they're requiring you to do a quarterly waste study. You know, I mean, that's.
There's also a quarterly survey that they're asking for input quarterly, on a quarterly basis, on what should be on the menus.
Right.
And to do it quarterly, even for the larger districts, is very difficult because you have to order food and know how much you're going to, to have the families provide input on what's going to be on your menu on a quarterly basis and still have time to order your food is unreasonable.
And I'm just going to. And I'm just going to add the, I understand composting.
Oh, that was the other
Well, with composting, if you've composted, you also know that unless you're doing it correctly and you're not diligent, you've got a rodent problem that can be just incredible. It, it attracts, you don't even want to know.
That was another large
So that is a whole different health and safety issue when, you know, if you've ever seen a rodent the size of a beagle. I have, you know, I have. It's like, you don't want to, you don't want to see that. Yeah.
I mean, I know we talked about things like turtle ponds in the past. You know, like composting is not necessarily for the faint of heart. And where's Ulta Repka to put that, for instance? It's all cement around that school. And most of our schools are like that, you know? And it takes, and the, and the issue is like, it takes, it takes work. It's not like what you do in your backyard when you have a little bit and you can spin it. And you have hundreds of kids and hundreds of pounds of waste a day. It's a job. So where's the job coming from? Who's going to do that? It's not going to be the science
It's going to be a fire hazard as well. That's true. Yeah. I'm sure you're going to have, I, I, I'm sure there will be parents will say, my kid's not going to do that.
Or maybe they could use it as either an incentive or a punishment.
Yeah. I mean, there's, yeah. The idea that you have to train people up and it takes special, it, it's not just, you know, my fear is people think, oh, we can just throw that out in the back and it's going to be okay. And it's, it's not. And even if you're doing it correctly, it's still attracting, you know?
I'll, I'll just say one last thing and I'm, it's so nice to talk about something I really know. You know, like, it's like, nice, it's like, where's my heart? I mean, the biggest thing in this is that like, when do, when does most of the food get grown? Where are the kids and the staff? And that's why you see the boneyards of, of greenhouses and little raised beds behind every school. And they're not being used because no one's there and no one's funded to have them there. And so that is like the largest thing. And so seasonal, it's summertime. It's a little bit of, you know, you can get into, into the fall for sure. You can get some springtime in. But even now, all the vegetables are starting to grow now here in this part of the state and north. And kids are what, a couple more weeks before they're out of the school year? And for the summer. And so I think that's another big thing that I think we just need to be cautious about with this.
Oh, they should have thought about that with the, added that to the 180-day rule. Maybe, maybe it would have helped them in court.
So I, I have a suggestion. You guys, at your leisure, so May 29th is when public comment is done. So at your leisure, if you want to, maybe send to, yeah, you and Becca and myself, your comments. Try to do it, if you can, by Monday or Tuesday. And then maybe we can get together with you and come up with a public comment from the charter schools and the commission together sometime next week to, you know, nail down our concerns. Does that make sense? Would we do it in a Zoom meeting, do you think? Or would that make sense?
It's on the agenda tomorrow to decide. That's exactly, so you might coordinate.
Because I
Okay, yeah.
So then I guess the, so
We'll need authority from you guys. We'll need authority from you guys to write on behalf of the PEC to collaborate with PCSNM and to, and to provide comment from the PEC. And so, yeah. You'll have to decide if you guys trust us enough for that.
We're looking forward to Alan's comments because he knows what's going on here.
Maybe it could be an honorary member next week and come to our Zoom and just chat with us. That way we can get like the practicality that you know, I think would be really helpful. So if, if you don't mind, we'll invite you and if you can. Yes, okay. We'll figure it out.
Commissioner Ringo.
Okay, I can only add to this, having done quite a few pork projects of greenhouses and stuff like that, exactly what Alan is saying. There, you usually have a teacher that is really excited about this. And then that teacher leaves and then that program goes away. So what, it seems to me, I'm leaning toward Stevens, seems to me we need to be a little more firm about this and just tell PED we find this untenable, that it is just not acceptable. And what, we, we can't, I mean, I feel like public comment from us is a little too light. I, I feel like we ought to, with a very strong letter to the secretary, this is an untenable rule. And you need to, you need to understand that we, as a commission, cannot support this rule. I'm sorry, I just, I feel, I feel pretty strongly about it.
You know, you might have an answer to this. What if we just said no? State charter schools said, you know what? No, what are they going to do? What are they going to do? They're going to just like build a greenhouse at every school and say, you better do it?
They'll withhold their food funding.
All right, so now we have, I mean, there's a place where you take a stand.
Not, not when you can't
No, I know you want to feed kids. But you hear what I'm saying is like, you just, there's a point at which you take a stand and you say, you know, you're dumb as a box of rocks. We can't do this, you're not funding it.
I, I think that articulating why any of the parts of this rule is problematic is helpful. And the whole point of having a rule hearing and getting feedback is to contemplate changes in the rule. And you guys, as a, as a body, have some insightful and critical bits of feedback that should be considered. So I would encourage you to articulate your points very well. And you've already identified certain areas that you find problematic. But I think just getting it out.
I mean, I think the, the problem that I see is the fact that when we have provided very specific, this is wrong, it's never been listened to. That's where I, you know, I'm not discouraging because I think there should be strong public comment made. But on the flip side, I personally don't hold out a whole lot of hope because I have not seen through the 180-day rule, through, you know, whatever. I have not seen the, yes, we, we had the hearing and we listened to a thousand people. But we still not changing it.
That's because we don't have the leverage.
I, I do, I struggle with, how did people get to this? How did a reasonable person get to this and think that this was real? You know, but then again, I'm using the term reasonable people. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying. So I come at it from that point, but I, I still, I strongly encourage. And even when there is a joint communication, each and every one of us to also, you know, do individual and, and do it, you know? It doesn't require you coming up here. You know, you can do it in writing, you can do it on the, on Zoom. But I'm, I'm a little jaded, you know, with it because, you know, I, I, like I said, I'm coming at this from, how did this even happen? And then the, I don't see them, I've never seen them really listening a whole lot.
Unfortunately, it did happen. And we've got to do the best that we can to point out. And that's why I think we're going to be very direct and very pointed in our assessment of the problems with this.
I, I think we'll be, I feel pretty confident we'll be able to be critical but very constructive in our letter from the PEC. So if you all want to do the mad ones, do that individually. I'm just going to be very, no, I'm just thinking if anybody is like, wants to be like very stern about this, we're going to be very professional, constructive. Be like, I, I've, I've read people's feedback before in, in rule. And there's a big difference from people who just complain about it versus, hey, in this line on this, you know, it's, it's received much better and we don't need to.
And it's, it's obvious that this was done looking at traditional public schools and not looking at charter schools. Yeah, I mean, because when you see that individual charter school, you know, is the actual school food authority. That's apparent to me that they, they were looking at that as a, as a school district, not as an individual charter school. So that's going to be a key point for us, that it's untenable for an individual, small or moderate-sized charter school to adhere to these kinds of onerous requirements.
I don't even think most districts can, can comply with this. They can't. I'm looking at the, you know, my district, they can't do that. You know, it's just not, they, they can't do that.
That's true.
No, you're right. So I'm also hoping that traditional districts are also looking at this and, you know, and, and providing that constructive, you know, it's like, you know, let's just, you know, do a cost analysis of what this looks like and looking at that, that staff. And true, a traditional district might have a little more flexible staff to be able to, but it's still, it's very hard to maintain those. It, it really is. I mean, I think RFK is probably one of the few schools that really does it well.
Right, RFK does it. Vista Grande, that's in our, in our group, they, they probably, they have a couple of greenhouses. But I was just telling Director Chavez that even a place like Las Lunas or Berlin that have very agricultural-centered communities and Las Cruces, of course, unless we include pecans or chili, like, how are you really going to hit this? It's so hard.
Lots of growth.
And you can't, you can't, yeah, you can't grill without, without the shade. I do think that it, it, it does like, I mean, now that they're, you know, the 180-day rule, it was, you know, we all know where that is right now. I can't imagine this could get to that, get to that stage, you mean? Because it's, it's just really difficult for, for schools to comply with this.
Or your own water restrictions just normally.
Send us your comment.
All right, we are on to discussion on what equity and transportation for state charter schools. Do we, we, we had a, we have a transportation subcommittee, I know. But we're looking at, should we be looking at legis, some legislative initiative to assure that charters have the appropriate funding for transportation? Because it still is, am I not? Still is the first year they're not funded. That's still there, correct? So that, at the very least, needs to change. So that a charter, you know, a charter loses the potential for students and you're, you're targeting specific families that can't necessarily afford the time to drop their kids off without that transportation funding. I know schools that get the grant often use that grant money to help fund that. But why should that have to be? Yeah, yeah. So, and I don't even know why that came in.
About the routes. That's, that's why they say that, because they aren't certain where students come from. They, they look at the second year because then you know the addresses of the students that attended.
So when do they have to have the routes established by?
Yeah, I think well ahead of the school year. But I still think that, that there are some possible solutions people could come up with.
I think you could have drop zones. And most, most new schools would, at the very least, be able to establish drop zones. Yeah, a lot of schools do because it's, it's just, A, it's either cost-effective time because some are sharing buses. So they have to do that so they have the use of a bus. But I think at the very least, schools, new applications should be able to do drop zones.
And the new and expanding charter school CSP could actually be used to pay for transportation services. So some of the newer schools
But that's only if they get the grant.
Right, right.
And there's limited grants. There's only, yeah. So if, if we had six that went all the way through, you're talking one school would get, would be able to use the CSP grant money for it. So, all right. Governing boards. So we talked about this last month at one of the, here's a good example of the rule that we provided very professional input to when PED changed the rule related to school boards and the ability of the cabinet secretary to remove and replace. And PED took out of that rule the ability for the cabinet secretary to remove a charter school board. That was taken out of the rule. And we provided that input to the cab, to PED during that comment that this doesn't make a lot of sense simply because there's a vacuum created. There's no ability, if a board is not behaving appropriately, there is no mechanism now to remove that board. Or let's just say the whole board resigned. How do you replace? So that it does need some, there's a legislative fix that's needed for that. So I think that's something that we need to move forward on.
When we say things like move forward on, who, when, how, who's contacting which legislative, you know what I mean? Because we could say move forward on, and just legislative bodies in general. What does that actually mean? Are we saying that by next meetings in June, we're going to have identified these people to do this by such and such a date? We're going to have legislation drafted and written by July? I don't understand.
Well, my understanding is what we've done prior is when there's been a decision that this is something that we move on. I know for me, that is part of conversations I'm having with legislators now. Because that is something that we've earmarked and said, we need to, we need to move on this. So this is something that I know I'm actively pursuing with legislators.
And then I would ask Valerie, what are you guys doing? Because I mean, you know, to hitch your wagon to our horses or whatever metaphor works. No, that was metaphor. You and your literal, yeah, I mean, just so they're, you know, so we're all working together because you and Matt and the others have lots of contacts. And if these are things you support as well.
I don't have your agenda back up. So it was the 2%?
No, we're talking about governing boards and the fact that at this moment in time, there is no mechanism to remove a school board or school board members.
And I think It was on what's our legislative
Well, and I think, I think what Steve's question is, is when we say move forward, is there some kind of a process by which we connect with legislators in order to push forward the agenda that we think is important?
Well, what we're looking at is creating a fix to that vacuum that was created so that it being either the PEC has the ability with, to, to hold a hearing. Because I know when the school board member Because I know when the school board members are removed, there has to be a public hearing by the Cabinet Secretary in order to to move forward on that, so that there would have to be some kind of due process that took place so that we would either have a hearing to present the case as to why these, this person or number of board members should be effectively removed from the position and then a mechanism to then replace them. Or if it was the whole board, the Cabinet Secretary with school boards can bring in someone to operate that school board until the next election or, you know, I forget how it's worded, but I know, um, there's been individuals that have been hired to operate as the school board because there's, I guess, a lack of quorum with the removal.
So when Matt gets back from paternity leave, then we'll talk to him and our lobbyists, other lobbyists, so that they can formalize the process to be able to get you. He's back July 7th. And he had a baby girl.
Do we have a name?
Tony Antoinette.
Nice, nice.
So, um, I, seems like, um, you you kind of spoke about, we we got to have something to offer, right? I mean, if if we 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 need to wordsmith a proposal, right? That's that's what, I mean, to me, yeah, we can, when we say moving on with this, that's what it means to me is that we need to put on the agenda a specific time or or subcommittee or whatever to put a concrete proposal as to what we want our, what what our proposal is. I mean, um, for me, that seems pretty critical upfront. I mean, we 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 can talk, we don't like it, or this, we have a problem here, Houston, but we got to have an answer to that problem in order to be heard. So, so do we have an answer? Is there a legislative fix? That's what I heard you say, was there's, there should be a legislative fix. Is there, is there such a animal that we can quote right now?
You mean a process?
What what you said was when we're, that it requires a legislative fix.
So we would need legislation that would empower some entity, presumably us, to have the authority to remove a school board member or members through a due process hearing that would, because when the Cabinet Secretary does it to local school boards, there has to be a hearing that's held for that. So that a, so that really you're taking the same process, except instead of the Cabinet Secretary doing it, it's us doing it.
We can fairly succinctly put that together.
Correct. I think so. Right.
But we, in order to get a sponsor, we got to have something concrete to give to them and say,
Right.
Here, this is what we want.
Yes.
So who does that? I mean, you've you've said it pretty clearly what we want to do, but we we have to have it written down as a, I I mean, LEFC, that's what they do, right? They propose legislation.
Right.
Do we have to act like that and have a, can we have the, um, I mean, have it wordsmithed and put together as a, that they could just take and 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 propose it?
You can, you can do it one of a couple of ways, you know. We can draft it, I can draft it, you could take it over to them, but also legislative council, if you take an idea to them, if, you know, you have to, you know this, but if you have to have a legislator open up a file at legislative council, then you get a drafter, you, you know, the chair can go sit down with legislative council and say, this is what we want to do. And then they can say, well, I think it's a good idea to put it in the Charter School Act, or I think it's a good idea to go amend the statute that the secretary felt didn't give him the authority previously. So I think that there's a couple of different ways that someone at legislative council could go about it. They're going to do that anyway. If you have draft language and you hand it to them, they'll say, thanks, and they'll consider that, but a lot of times they really will consider that, but they also, um, I was just trying to go through and see, there are provisions in the Charter School Act, which is probably the easiest way to give you authority, not go outside of the act, um, but there's plenty on boards. So possibly, I'm thinking it probably makes more sense to have someone like the chair go and find a sponsor and then see what they want. Um, and now's a good time to do that.
You're going to make that contact. I think, because I would love to be able to, because once you have a sponsor, you certainly can get people to sign on to that, and I would love to get involved with, you know, coercing some of our conservative people to do that.
No. No, we have to, we, yeah, yeah, we have to, we have to be, you know, talking to people that, right now, don't have an opponent. You know, so that you know that they can be working on this. Um, yeah. Okay. School bonding. Oh, yeah, yeah, school bonding. That's yours.
Yeah, so the idea that I was hoping, that I had heard about is an opportunity for charter schools to be, have the same capability as traditional public schools to use the permanent fund as a guarantor of of the, of of municipal bond or whatever. And that would give charter schools the opportunity to have separate initiatives on on the ballot that they could actually ask for funding and would be, would be, it would be a huge boon, it seems to me. And and so that's the kind of, I want to follow that same path. How can, how can we find a sponsor? How can we give, get a specific language that we can propose to a legislature, legislator to push that issue?
So what maybe recommend is, um, the folks that have, that PCS and NAM has partnered with, that have sponsored and co-sponsored the school facility funding legislation, that that might be the best people to to start with because they've obviously been supportive of funding for charter school facilities. So to me, that, it just kind of seems the easiest to start with and see whether there's appetite there.
Would that be one of my my legislature, Mr. Padilla? Uh, because I, he, he, he may have a, an opponent, but it wouldn't be a viable one. Now, I don't think Andreas would be in the House, right? Has he been friendly to charter schools?
Um, for the most part, yes. I can always, I I can, the only, what I can say for sure is his door has always been open whenever I've wanted a conversation. You know, I haven't had that many specific conversations necessarily about legislation like that. I haven't. But I can say that he's always been very open and willing to talk.
Okay, so in order not to kick the can down the road, can, what do we need as an enabling thing to, can I, can I, can we work with Valerie and and, um, yes, let's see, whatever. Anyway, can can we, how can we get this ball rolling and have to to try to pin something that would be legitimate to propose?
Well, it's one of two ways. If it's, if it's on the legislative agenda for PCS and NAM, that would certainly be something that we would be supportive of and, you know, appear at hearings saying, you know, we're fully in support of this. But if it's not on their legislative agenda, then it has to be our generating, and they may very well come in and say, yeah, we support this as well. But it may not be something necessarily that they're going to take the time.
Is that on your agenda?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that that makes it easier.
Yeah.
It really does. So we'd just have to see, and as long as it's something that they're moving forward on, then we just have to, you know, flock up to whoever we can and and be present at those, at those hearings.
Does the LEFC then also have any input in this?
Only, um, I don't see that they would, um, have this as a legislative priority that they'd be putting forward. I don't.
I had a question, if it was okay, if I asked the commission that that I didn't see on the agenda. The PEC came up during the last legislative session to be used as a school board. Right, and it probably will come up again in the 60-day session. Do you all have a stance or?
Well, we took a stand the last time. So I think our stand is similar and consistent, that we don't support, or we didn't support the, um, turnover of the PEC to a state school board, that our support is for a standalone commission.
So Commissioner Gibson, is that a proactive?
Legislative priority?
Yeah.
Probably.
Just checking.
Just trying to feel out what the likelihood of a resolution again is. But I, but it is, yeah.
Great, thanks.
So while you're here, oh, well, okay, so let me ask, um, is PCS and NAM going to have any legislation similar to, I think, the last two sessions about transparency of the 2%?
I'm not sure about the 2%. I'd have to wait till Matt gets back, but I know that we're looking at the small school size funding again.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's something that maybe, and I know there's, yeah, it's failed the last two times, um, but I think there, you know, and we have to decide what we feel we have to work on most. You know, is it the governing board? Is it the, you know, potentially a standalone commission? Is it clarity on the 2% language? I, I do see the need to try to clarify that 2% money doesn't get reverted. You know, and I know that wasn't part of the transparency piece. That wasn't, but, um, we have to figure out our priorities.
The other possibility that Director Chavez had blacked, first, I think you could say something as required to support the budget needed for the commission or something, to allow you to take only what you needed. So you wouldn't need to send something back to the schools. The other is, there is a stimulus fund in the statute that you could amend, but that assumes you've taken more money than you need and that you put extra money into that fund, but I dropped the language into the.
Right, because the stimulus fund right now is only for startup. And that's not what we would want, we would want that 2% money to be able to fund support for all schools, not just for startups.
But I would also think, given what you discussed in the past, you would want to not take money you didn't need.
Right. Yeah.
Can you talk more about the small school, what she just brought up?
So for, um.
If she opens document six, I just dropped the statutory language in there.
For many years, was it since the beginning of charters? I'm not sure if it's from the beginning of charters, but pretty close. Charters that fell below a certain ma'am got an adjustment for their small school size.
I didn't put small school size. Do you want me to put things that they raised?
Yeah, so, um, and it was, it went to traditional public schools that were small and then when charters, so it actually predated charters because then when charters started, small charters were allowed to do the small school size adjustment. Some legislators believed there was a gaming of the system. They believed that some charters were staying purposely small so that they were getting that small school size adjustment. Some legislators felt that the spirit of that legislation was for traditional schools, not for charter schools. So that charter schools shouldn't have been made or given the opportunity because it was made for the smaller rural traditional schools. Um, it was never founded, through any study that they did, that there was a gaming of a system. But that outside of maybe one or two, and I'll acknowledge that, but by and large, there wasn't, you know, so, um, legislators felt that there was too much money going to the charter schools for that small school size adjustment.
Okay, I'm just going to be, Aaron and I were talking about this with the native schools. I'm, I got it on, don't I? Okay. God, I'm trying. It seems like, um, that a lot of the native schools are in areas and and have missions that are viable in those areas, but they are very small schools. And that in, so they have both strikes against them. They're a small school in a very rural area, which requires a whole lot of diligence to come up with teachers and and people to work in those schools. And that, that to me, when I'm, I I just kind of, my heart goes out to those small schools that are trying very hard to fulfill their mission in that location. And they have this, they they do really, really need additional support. And that behooves our our commission to find a way to do that if we want those schools to thrive. And so, um, that's, to me, that is straight up where we need to be because those are the schools that we're, we're gonna, are gonna struggle and are gonna continue to have a hard time and be, it it just seems like that's, that's where we need to find a way to support those schools.
And that part of the discussion, because this came up a lot of years and then it finally, there was finally a decision that this is, this is a battle we're not going to win. It was clear. It was, it was, you know, it was going away. And you have to pick and choose your battles during legislative sessions. So, um, and like I said, it was a recurring battle and then it was finally, you know, you better stop fighting this because it's, it's a done deal. But there was also the sentiment by some that they thought, um, Impact Aid was going to kind of equalize it out. And it hasn't. It hasn't. So that that, it was kind of like, okay, this, this is going to help shift and it's still, schools are still going to be helped, maybe not sufficiently. Maybe not sufficiently, but they're gonna be helped. And then that, it doesn't. It didn't, it doesn't. So, um, you know, I'm fully in support of it. I'll be curious to see what the legislators that'll that'll sponsor it.
Do you guys think that the the situation has changed significantly to to reengage in that issue? That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah. It, um, you know, sometimes it's like, okay, we'll do this, but then we're gonna do a cap on charter school enrollment. So it's, you know, it's not as much about the communities that are or aren't being helped. It starts to be the anti-charter, pro-charter movement. Which it shouldn't be, but that's what it ends up being. Yeah. It's just like facilities. When when legislators say, hey, when we pass the Charter School Act, you told us that you weren't gonna need any money for facilities. Well, that's just a flat-out lie. You know, because who would have thought you can start a public school and not need facilities? What did you think? You know, so? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, you know? Like the email I got, we're gonna be hugging trees. Okay. So, um, you know, hopefully we'll have a clearer picture in June as to what that looks like and what we can do to help with that. Because, um, we're certainly, I think, more than willing to do so. Uh, number seven. Uh, I can only say thank you, thank you, thank you to Consello. But, you know, reimbursements are, you know, on it and moving quickly, so, uh, you know. If there's any delay, it's because my receipts can't be read. You know, so that's, you know, I I truly do appreciate that. And it it shouldn't go unnoted because it's, it really is, uh, it's it's important for morale. You know, to be able to do that. Um, Val, do you have anything on, because last month, we talked about the grants. And then you brought up the concern that it wasn't necessarily as much the grant money, but it was the award letters that were delayed. That there may be some grant money, but on the front end, it was award letters that were delayed. So do you have any additional information on that?
I did. But I could probably find it in my notes and report on it tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Standing agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For the RFRs and the reimbursements. Yes.
Okay, thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Uh, Performance Framework Subcommittee, we have not met. Well, we do need to, yes.
That meeting would would probably be the launch on the epicenter, right?
Yeah, they're already setting that up. Yeah.
Do we have any dates or anything or?
Well, I'm I'm hoping Monday or Tuesday of next week.
To find out date?
No.
To have a meeting?
To have the first meeting.
Okay, so we, it would be great to get.
Yeah, we need, yeah.
So would, do you want me to reach out and find out within those two days when Megan and Mary might?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll I'll get that before.
Because that's really short notice. Yeah.
But I I've found, I have found like multiple versions of subcommittees and who's on them, and none of them are right. So I also.
They're working, Consuelo is working on that.
So I think tomorrow she'll take, she'll have a draft.
Right.
Share and get clarification from you all on who's on. And then I think the other question would also be who's the PEC lead, if there is such a thing.
Right.
For those.
The Budget Subcommittee has not met, but we do need to meet.
We took out the PEC lead because there's a staff person that sets the meeting, and it didn't seem like you guys were really having one member of a committee be the lead PEC person.
But I think the problem came, there probably should be, because there was a concern very recently with the Budget Subcommittee and the meeting that was.
Okay, Consuelo, I, on the draft, I took out that, and you'll need to put those lines back in.
This will help.
Yeah. Okay, a policy? Okay. Food services, I think we got what you, yep, we did. Uh, we don't. Yeah, 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 we don't need to even put E on there anymore. Because we're, we're done. Okay, um, indicators of distress. So we did Journey to Chicago, and it was very informative. And I think we've I think we did a little bit of a mind shift as to what this really should look like. And, um, we're, we need to meet and do, because there, we have the NACA report and the National Alliance, the indicators of distress folks, we need to go through because what we talked about there was really not as much uh, something coming from us down, but that this being a tool, kind of like the insurance tool that we're using with schools, that we're using, that we would use for governing boards. That they would have this checklist of things, and it wouldn't be something that's coming to us. It would be something that would be going to CSD staff, but it was really a checklist to say, do we do this? Do we do this? Do we have this in place? Is this a process that we, so there's a whole, there's pages of things that could be included. What we have to do as a subcommittee is hone it down to what we think is the most important for governing boards. And it to be that working tool and that the the governing board is going to then submit it to CSD as a, this is what we, we need help with this. This is something that we are already doing. And that CSD can give feedback back to the schools on it and say, hey, you know, we saw this. How can we help you in making this this better? And that it's only through, really, the reports back to us in terms of they've got late submissions. They're, you know, they've got the audit findings. That's how we're picking up that a school, you know, they've had five head administrators, you know, things like that, that that's where we're picking it up. But it it actually being that working tool to show not distress, but the success of, hopefully, it's moving towards success of a good governing board. So after we meet and hone it down, then we'll bring it to the commission for their input to see if there's something else that they think is missing that is really important for a governance council that maybe we didn't include, and we can come up with a as comprehensible list, but manageable for a governing board so that it becomes routine for them to look at it and say, hey, you know, we need to work on this. Yeah, we're really good on this. You know, where where can we reach out for help? And it become that more of a tool than a a real compliance, you're under our thumb, and we're gonna send you, uh, you know, a letter of concern out of it's, it's more, we want you to be doing the best you can. And that was, um, it really was a mind shift during that time, but I, you know, I learned a I'll talk to you about renewals at some point. Okay.
Commissioner Gibson, I did find my little, my scribble notes. They're not my official notes, but I do have.
Oh, okay.
So it's the Community Schools, CTE, Title III EDAP, and the H House Bill Two Out-of-School Time Grant.
Those are all award letters that that have been late or haven't been received at all?
Correct, sure. Community Schools, CTE, Title III EDAP, and the OST Grant, the Out-of-School Time Grant.
Thanks. Okay, could you repeat it one more time?
Sure can.
Okay.
Community Schools. Okay.
And I'm just wondering, well, she's writing. Was there, um, I'm trying to remember, was there some funding that was clawed back from community schools during the last session? So, yeah, I'm wondering if that's, yeah, okay.
Title III. And there were a couple of other programs that they mentioned. One was EA Fellowship and a Restorative Justice Program, but I don't have details on those programs. EA Fellowship? Yeah, I haven't, not sure what that is. And some Restorative Justice Program, but I don't have the name of the program.
Okay, thanks for that. Uh, the the PEC liaisons, well, the LEFC and the LFC are meeting as we are meeting. So I'm not in beautiful downtown Grants right now, and I think the LEFC is. Yeah. So I, you know, and this is just their preliminary planning for LEFC in particular, so I'm not missing much, but hopefully, when they set their agenda, they're not meeting every time we're meeting. The Educators Education Advisory Council? That is. Oh, I'm sorry, it says Indian Ed, I thought, I kept thinking that was yours. Indian Education. So Commissioner Klaus Schillig, did you get to meet with them?
Well, I came into Santa Fe early to attend the Taos Integrated School of the Arts, um, reclaiming the land. And so we left early and went to, um, on our way to Taos, pulled off the road at Velardi to participate in the Zoom meeting, which took place, started at 8:30. So we pulled off, made sure we were parked safely. No service. No service. So we kinda drove around the area looking, and we still couldn't connect to it, so I missed it again. So, um, I for sure will be in attendance next month.
Okay.
But I am going to the Government to Government Summit. I'll get to see a lot of them in June. That, your school is amazing, Steve. Um, that is your, okay, yeah, the Taos Integrated School of the Arts? Yeah, I was very impressed with their little ceremony and the students there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. PSCOC?
Well, I had a similar experience. I had connection. The Capitol doesn't have connection. It was a hot mess. I I could, for a little while, I could listen to the the livestream, but it was so, I had to have my, I couldn't watch because I had to have my hair, ear against my computer to hear the whole thing. And it was, it was really quite a mess. Luckily, it wasn't too pivotal a meeting. We are, um, we we did hear from several of the, um, you know, districts that are asking for awards and the amount of the awards, and went through the the, obviously, the financial plan. It's it's really extensive, and we have a lot going on. But the, this particular meeting, we really did, we did, um, give um, some input to some of the districts. But really and truly, we have, um, we have a big meeting coming up the next time, and so I'm thankfully gonna be there in person. And I still have a subcommittee meeting before that. But this one luckily wasn't too, there was nothing really that affected charter schools.
I find there often with, during the legislative session, there's chat, real challenges with trying to stay connected.
Yeah, it it was awful.
To the committee hearings because often it it just, you get dropped out.
It was terrible.
You're in the queue to offer comment, you're just gone. Then you're just gone. So it it is quite a bit of a challenge. Thanks for that. Uh, NIPSY?
They had their meeting when we were in Chicago. So, uh, we're supposed to have a special meeting tomorrow while we're having our PEC meeting, so there we go.
No, you know, uh, School Boards Association?
Um, no, they didn't.
Okay. Oh, and the library, Mike isn't here to give us a library commission report. Okay, the Coalition of Education Leaders.
Yes, I consider all of us a coalition of education leaders. So we are attending it now.
So that that meetup, uh, that meetup with Superintendent Rounds didn't go as well as we, you know?
No, we went round and round and round and didn't get, didn't get it done.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay, we're good till Ellen gets to go to graduation on time. So congratulations. And. Not go. So have fun, be safe, and see you all tomorrow.